At 6:30, we're going to call the meeting into order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Curtis, you might adjust the mics slightly. This seems awfully hot. Michelle will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will lead us in the invocation immediately following the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in the invocation, please. Gracious heavenly Father, among your many gifts are this day's daily bread and the opportunity for service. As beneficiaries of your graciousness, we thank you. Father, today is our first meeting of a new year. While we approach it with great hope and anticipation, we are sobered by the knowledge that fear and anger enjoy an ever-growing chorus of voices of apprehension, distrust, and suspicion, leading to the loss of civility, common courtesy, fractionalization, and hatred. These signs percolate from neighborhood to neighborhood, town to town, state to state, and nation to nation. Father, we ask that you replace this anger and fear with your love for others. Joy in living, peace that sheds alarms and doubt, and finally patience to be steadfast in all circumstances. Father, it is only when we turn to you in our prayers that we can love those who torture us, pray for those acting beyond the bounds of civil discourse, and encourage those stunted by an evolving atmosphere of disdain. Father, please help us to remain faithful to your call to act for the common good, to show your graciousness to those we meet, to demonstrate kindness even in the face of torment, and to always act with the self-control available through you. Finally, we call on you to share with the many public servants here this evening your patience, wisdom, and judgment on each of the items before us this evening. And may our thoughts, words, and deeds be only those that you would have us pursue. Please continue to protect, preserve, and prosper our community, state, and nation. Item number three, citizens be heard. Ms. Goodman? If you give your full name and your address, please.
My name is Shawna Goodman, and I'm at 103 Happy Trail.
And please.
Okay, great. So I'm here to talk about 6.3, which is the Northwest Military Wall. Again, my name is Shawna Goodman. I live at 103 Happy Trail. My property backs up to Northwest Military and is next door to Mr. Basil Karcher's. There are two areas on our walk wall that have become compromised and are dangerously close to falling down completely, much like Mr. Karcher's. Over the past two years, we've had to patch various parts of the wall, costing us several thousand dollars. We have a current bid to patch the current two locations, and it's over $12,000. I believe that we all can agree that the wall was not properly built and therefore continuing to throw money at a structure that's going to continue to fall and is both ineffective and wasteful. I'm addressing you this evening to ask that you agree to the proposal City Manager Hill delivered at the November City Council meeting. In summary, the offer was for the city, Denton Properties, and the affected residents to split the cost of rebuilding the wall from the ground up correctly. Both my husband and I have agreed to this offer and wish to get the wall fixed as soon as possible. It is both an eyesore and could become a greater problem if the wall fully falls and our dogs and our children gain access to Northwest Military. I ask that you consider Mr. Hill's proposal, and let's focus on taking care of this situation in a timely manner. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Pross? If you give your full name and address, and then tell us what you have to tell us.
My name is Victor Press, 108 Rock Squirrel in Chavano Park. So I'm here to speak about the wall as well. I've been a resident, and I speak for many other residents in this neighborhood, in the city. I've been a resident here almost 40 years, so I know the history and I know the difficulties that have been involved in fixing this wall. But I think the city council has put off fixing it correctly, and sometimes a penny saved is a pound foolish. I don't know how many people go up and down Northwest Military each day, probably thousands. And what is their view? Their view is that the council either cannot afford to fix it, they don't know the history of it, or that they're not being, the city's not being maintained. So it would be in the city's good to take care and fix this wall properly. So I ask you tonight to consider the proposal that the city manager has put forward, and that we have this taken care of for the good of the city. I think legally, the city is able to do this, and I think it would reflect poorly if we left it for months more in a dangerous and eyesore kind of situation. So I'm asking you to address tonight and approve the funding and approve taking care of this problem that we have on Northwest Military. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brings us to item number four, council member comments.
Good evening, Happy New Year. Good to see everybody back.
Mary Ann?
Good evening. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Bob?
Happy New Year as well. Thank you for everyone coming out tonight. We appreciate seeing you.
Michelle?
Happy New Year, welcome.
And Mike?
Happy New Year also. Thank you for coming out. Hold us accountable. Thank you.
And I normally don't speak, but I was not at the staff brunch that the Women's Club put on this last week because of, or the week before because of the flu. And I just want to thank the Women's Club. You are the anchor of our community. Y'all have served us faithfully and without any selfish or ulterior motives for years. You make our community special, and you make our staff feel special. And a round of applause to our Women's Club. Brings us to item number five, presentations, commentations, and announcements. Recognition, holiday event. Michelle?
The only thing I wanted to say was I wanted to thank everybody who came out and everybody who participated. It was a great event. We had lots of children and lots of fun crafts and a wider age group of children, which I think was really a positive thing. And once again, I just wanted to say it was a great event and thank everybody who puts it on. The staff does a really good job, and as do the volunteers and the Women's Club who works on it as well. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you. And thank you, Michelle, for being such an important part of it. I really love the lady that you get to do the face painting. I think she is the most talented face painter in all of Barra County, if not South Texas and South and Southeast Texas. The next item is a proclamation honoring Willowood resident Tommy Flores, king of Fiesta Especial Royal Court. Tommy, I'm going to ask you to come forward with your friends and family from ARC. If y'all would come on up here, and I'm going to read this out in front of the audience. Come on down, come on down. You want to face the audience. We're facing the audience. Okay. Whereas Fiesta Especial is a community engagement program for children and adults with physical, cognitive, and developmental difficulties, and the family and friends love them. Whereas the Fiesta Especial Royal Court Leadership and Life Skills Development Program creates visibility for the leadership and contributions individuals with disabilities make in our local community. And whereas Tommy Flores was elected king of Fiesta Especial Royal Court for Fiesta 2018, whereas Tommy Flores, resident of Chavano Park, is known by the community for his tireless dedication of time and energy to raise awareness of the diverse community and individuals with disabilities throughout the San Antonio area. And whereas Tommy Flores raised $23,814 for the Art of San Antonio, an organization that for over six years has provided programs and services for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Now therefore, I, Robert Warner, have distinct pleasures as mayor of Chavano Park, Texas, to hereby proclaim on this the 22nd day of January 2018 that Tommy Flores is recognized as king of the Fiesta Especial Royal Court for 2018, and that January 22nd, 2018, be proclaimed King Tommy Flores Day. Shake hands, and I'll hand it to you over. We're going to get a picture right there. Hold on to that. Okay, great. Great. Tommy, thank you very much. One more, one more. So then shake hands, and we're going to bring over the top. Thank you, Tommy. Congratulations, Tommy. Thank you, sweetheart, for being with us. You take it very well. Mike, thank you so much. Good to be with you.
Thank you all very much.
Now, before we get started on our agenda, our regular agenda items, I'm going to request with the consent of council that we move forward item 6.4 to be the second agenda item behind 6.1. That would mean that following our action and discussion concerning the audit, that we will have the, that we will have the discussion concerning the 2017 annual crime report. Do I have any objection? There being no objection, then the...
I do. I have an objection. You're saying to move 6.4, the crime report, up after the audit?
After the audit. And then the other two items will follow immediately.
I would, I would say we should discuss the wall before we discuss anything. I would move that up since the people that spoke tonight came to hear about the wall. So I would be opposed to it.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know why you want to move it up. Is there, what's the reasoning?
The reasoning would be that item 6.4, 6.2 will, or 6.3 will include an executive session before we come back. And if people are here to hear the police chief, that it gives us an opportunity for them to hear that, and they can go along, and then we can come back and pick up the other two items in the ordinary course.
I'm even more opposed to doing it. Folks came out to speak about it, and if we have to go into closed session, we should do that quickly. Come out, make a decision, and move forward. That's my opinion.
I just always consider it to be rude to have people waiting out here when there are other agenda items that are of public interest. But if there, there being an objection, do I have a motion to reorder the agenda?
I actually would agree with Mary Ann. I think since the people are here, we should move the discussion on the wall before any executive session. I would rather see that.
But don't we need an executive session?
We're going to need the executive session before we discuss the wall. We will, we will talk with the attorney before we talk with the citizens.
Okay. I misunderstood that.
And, and that may be fine, but I don't see spending an hour in closed session. And I think people are here, they came to hear about the wall. It'll take 15 minutes, 30 minutes at most to get a discussion with the attorney about the wall. Most of it was in the packet. People are interested in this, and they came to speak, and we should get it done and move on to the next agenda.
Okay. I just was offering that as a possibility. I know that it's, people are always interested in hearing about, or hearing from our police department, and if they were here for that, then I would like to accommodate them as well.
And I'm not sure what every, who, I mean, two people got up and spoke about the wall. I don't know what the rest of the room wants to hear about.
Okay. It doesn't, I am fine going forward with the agenda as posted then. Discussion, action, accepting the 2017 audit. City Manager, Phil.
So I know you don't want to hear from me, but I'll tee it up, and then I'll turn it over to the auditor real quick.
And I'm also going to recognize Phil for his, as a presenter.
Yeah. Just for backgrounds, everyone's tracking, this year, we went out and awarded a contract to Armstrong, Vaughn, and Associates to do the audit, and that's a change in auditing firm. So this is the first year they've looked at us. They began their preliminary audit work in July, which is pretty early, and that was pretty good. It facilitated the audit. Field work concluded in mid-November, and Laura and I, but primarily Laura and Phil's team, had worked to complete any other requirements in the audit. We received the draft report on 3 January, and again, went through a couple finishing details. The bottom line is the report will be an unqualified opinion, which means the auditor did not detect any significant internal control breakdowns during the examination. Just giving you the definition of that. And the auditor typically applies generally accepted accounting auditing standards to ensure the firm's internal controls are adequate, functional, and established to in conformity to the laws and regulations which we've met. So Phil's here, he'll discuss that. I wanted to highlight two points. Well, actually, one point. The final general fund audited fund balance, and that's going to relate to fund balance topic later on in the evening, is $3,072,119, and that can be found on page 13. And this balance includes two areas of unanticipated increases I wanted to highlight from the staff perspective that equals $208,000. One of those items is dealing with dispatch services. So Barra County has been providing us dispatch services. We've been allocating $30,000 for that. We haven't been invoiced for that. As well as, none of the municipal cities that Barra County provides that have been invoiced for that. And so, again, we did some confirmation with the request of the auditors to make sure that they were clear on that, and there wasn't going to be any change. And what they told us was they will give us a year's notice should there be a change and should they start billing us for that, and we'll go from there. So the money we had allocated towards that, we've moved back into unrestricted fund balance. Again, I'll just remind you that we, every citizen in Chavano Park pays more taxes to Barra County than they pay to the city of Chavano Park. So I consider that to be one of those services that we get out of Barra County in terms of dispatch services. The second piece was franchise fees. We get franchise fees from electric, gas, phone, and cable, et cetera. We collected franchise fees in November, which were for services in July, August, and September. And so they've asked us to make an accounting change to where we account for those fees that received, you know, and we've received in November this year, but we're crediting it towards those revenues we received last, last year. So those, those are two of the account payments there. So, again, the requested motion is to accept the city of Chavano Park's 30, September 30th, 2017 financial statements. Those financial statements are known otherwise as the audit. And from that, I'll turn it over to Phil. I'm sure you have questions from him in terms of that or not. Phil, if you want to come up to the mic.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, council. It's everyone's favorite agenda item, sure. And Bill has stolen 90% of my thunder, so you had a good write-up in your packet as well. In the...
Can you hear the microphone?
Sure.
Just lift it up, yeah.
In the back of the financial statements that are in front of you, there's a letter that has some conduct about the audit, and it mentions some of the things that Bill's already talked about. One of them was the franchise fees, which is just the timing of when those revenues get recorded. Really just an academic thing that makes me happy, but probably doesn't really float anybody else's boat. It only changed about $5,000 for your franchise fee revenue for the year, so it's really a minor issue. The other thing that, in that letter, on the bottom of page three, is a, our recommendation to consider pooled cash. I know Laura's very familiar with pooled cash. I know she's not going to be here very long, but it would be a good idea to consider it. And the main benefit of pooled cash is you really only have one account at the bank, but all of your funds and your accounting system treats it separately. And right now, you have about 5.5 million in, spread across 12 bank accounts, and you don't necessarily need to have that much idle cash in those accounts. And if you were to pool them, you could reduce how much idle cash you have on hand and invest more of it. So just to give you some more numbers, 5.5 million, as I said, is in 12 accounts, banking accounts, checking accounts. And you had about 3.3 million in your investment accounts, which are CD, Techpool, and Techstar. So you could shift, if you had pooled cash, more of that idle cash to your investments and earn a pretty good rate of return. As you are now, you're earning pretty good money on your investments as we're talking about. So as those rates continue to go up, as they have been, it could be quite a bit more money for you. The con to pooled cash is it can be a little bit more complicated. So if you have somebody that doesn't have governmental accounting experience, they may not be as familiar with it and may struggle with the pooled cash aspect. But you have an accounting software that's set up for it. That's really just our recommendation, so a thing you have to do, but something I would recommend you consider. The city does a really good job budgeting and projecting, so I don't know how much benefit I can really provide on the financial statements, but there were a couple pages I wanted to touch on, if you wanted to follow along. And in discussing this with Laura, we picked, I decided, I recommended, and she agreed to do comparative statements in the back, rather than just having budget-to-actual statements. And on 54 is a comparative general fund statement, so it'll show what happened for your last fiscal year compared to the year before. Page 54. I'll give them a second to get there in case who else wants to read. And it's paper page 54, so it's probably like 56 or 7 on the PDF.
And the hard copy, you gave hard copies to everybody.
Yes, there are hard copies up there.
If you refer to your hard copy.
Seven more pages. You went one too far.
Yeah. There you go. So at the top, you'll notice that all of your revenues except for court were up this year, and they all beat the budget pretty considerably. On your expenditure side, you'll see your total expenditures were the 4.8 million, if you scroll down just a little bit, in the general fund for 2017. Those are pretty significant increase over the year before, but a lot of that was capital outlay, that last expenditure line. That's where you buy capital assets. The largest of that, 505,000, was an EMS unit for approximately 200,000. If you take those two lines out, your expenditures between the two years increased 13%. And if you recall, this is the first year of your new salary survey, so the increases in the salaries made up almost the entirety of that increase in your general fund spending. Just below it, you'll see that you had some transfers in of 605,000, which came from your capital replacement fund and your crime control prevention district. Then you sent some money, the 251,000, back to your capital replacement fund, leaving you with the fourth line from the bottom of a $515,000 increase in your general fund fund balance. Getting you again to that magic number Bill talked about, the 3,072. And I know your policy is to keep 50% of your future expenditures in fund balance, and you're a little bit over that now. Depending on how you want to calculate that, somewhere between probably 500,000 over. Based on your 2017 expenditures, it was seven and a half months of your operating costs, so somewhere in the 60% range of your fund balance. I know your 2018 budget is going to chew into that a little bit, so that'll bring it down and probably get it closer to 50% by the end of 2018, just because of the increase in your expenditures and drawing down on it just a touch.
Also, just because I wanted, it's pretty significant, we had some vacancies during the year. So overall, in salaries, we were, didn't spend between public works, fire, and police 114,000. That's, that's because there were some vacancies. So that's pretty significant in that area, so.
So you're saying that could have been on top, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
As far as what was planned?
Yeah.
On the page next to it, if you flip to page 56, has your water utility fund, and it has your operations for, again, comparing 2017 to 2016. You have just one more page. So you'll see that the revenues were up, which was completely consumption-based. There was just more water used this last year. And on the operating cost side, those were also up quite a bit, but the majority of that was your Trinity well repairs. We discussed that with Laura and didn't think that that really extended the life of the Trinity well significant enough to capitalize it. So that's kind of in there, reducing your operating income. But if that doesn't continue in the future, then you would have had positive operating income in your utility fund. But after paying everything else, all of your interest expense, you had some bond issue costs for the refunding last year, which did hit your utility fund for 76,000 in 2017, but over the long term, you're still going to save 235,000 over that on that bond. So you're going to come out ahead, just in the first year, it doesn't look like you're coming out ahead. And then at the bottom of that page, you'll see your utility fund ending at 3.2 million. Now that 3.2 million, a lot of that's tied up in your capital assets, and you have 956,000 of that that's really available to fund your operations. It's not tied up in the water system. And about half, approximately half of that, you've set aside for the capital replacements for the utility system. So it's about half unencumbered and half that you've kind of set aside for those capital replacements. But without boring anybody to death, I was hoping that was somewhat beneficial, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, and they can help explain.
Does anybody have any questions? Phil, I did have one little question, and that goes over to page 16, where we're under contributing on our pension plan. And it kind of surprised me that we would have missed it by that much.
Well, this is a little bit confusing, and if you flip to, let me get to the page. 46 and 47 has kind of the detail of your pension fund, and 47 in particular. What they do is they assign you a rate that you're required to contribute, which TMRS says you contribute this percentage, on the top of page 47, if we'll get there. They, they say you have to contribute this percentage, but it's not necessarily the total amount that you would contribute, the total cost of your pension. And TMRS sets that rate. You can choose to pay more if you want to, and if you'll, you'll see on that page, you've paid just a little bit more than you had to the last two years.
We have tried to fully fund, and that was the reason I was surprised that we missed it actuarially by $100,000.
Sure.
That's a major problem in many states and cities and communities across America. Texas doesn't have nearly the problem, other than the city of Dallas, that other cities have. But as a community, we want to be very vigilant and make sure that we don't get behind the eight ball and, and not be able to manage our finances and let something like this get out of control. And it just struck me as a, considering the way that everything else went, it was an outlier in the entire report.
Sure. And TMRS sets those rate based on projections. So they say, we think we're going to get this much in interest returns, and we think you're going to have this many people retiring, we're going to pay this many benefits. So they set your rate well in advance of the actual actuarial study, and then when it comes out, it's either much better or much worse. Your contribution rate is a little high, the 13, 14% range. It's not the highest that we have, but it's, it's definitely up there. We have some other cities that have contributed extra, a lot extra in the millions, and they still have not seen any movement on that percentage. Even over years, it hasn't really driven it down. So if I were the city, I wouldn't make it a focus to pay extra unless you can't live with the rate that they're quoting you to pay. And you're right that you have been paying the full rate. They give you a phase-in rate and a full rate, and you've paid the full rate. But it's still, it's not enough to meet their expectations of what they, of what actually happens, so which is retrospective. So you'll probably see in the next couple of years a slight uptick in your rate to catch back up.
Actually, I'd be surprised because the market has performed so extraordinarily in the last year.
You're right, and that's a good point.
That TML has also exceeded to that because they now have a blended portfolio instead of a bond portfolio. But it just surprised me that we were $100,000 underfunded for the year for our contributions, and that seemed strange.
Sure.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? Sorry, Bob?
Quick question. On the consolidation of the accounts, which I think is an excellent recommendation, I guess I have a question. Our investment committee met recently, correct?
They did.
Is that something that came up in front of them, or should...
That's, I'll let Laura answer that, but that's not really in the, that's not, that's an accounting means for that now. It has implications, just like Phil said, in terms of what you can do with that. Go ahead.
And we, we actually went, in the meeting, it would help us because of, we just have so many bank accounts, and just managing that money, I would be able to just take some more of that funds that are at frost and invest them in other ways. Just a little, it just makes it a little simpler. We, we, the encode can perform pooled cash. We do not have that portion of the module, so we would have to add that. It's not a lot of money, but just so you know, that piece of the module is not, we don't have it. But it would also streamline accounts payable. When we do accounts payable, when we pay bills, if we pay for money that's coming from the crime control, or Oakwell, or PEG, or all of those, we currently cut everything out of the general fund. It creates... we currently cut everything out of the general fund. It creates what people call due to, to from, and I have to physically go to the bank. And I do it once a week, sometimes once a month. It depends on how it falls and how what the balances look like. And I have to physically transfer the money from those individual bank accounts into the general fund to replenish it for that cash it paid out to pay that bill. So that would be a function that would be, you know, that wouldn't have to be performed anymore. So again, there is some setup on the INCODE side, and, and it would, it would though help, again, being able to take some of that money and, and investing it a little bit differently. However, it's not, it isn't just a change. It is a flip of a switch with INCODE and, and some setup.
Anybody else? Okay, if there's no further discussion, do I have a motion to accept the City of Chavano Park September 30, 2017 financial statements?
I move that we accept the City of Chavano Park September 30, 2017 financial statements.
Okay, do I have a second? Bob has seconded. We're now open for discussion. There being no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 6.2, presentation of drainage improvement plan. Phil, thank you very much. We appreciate all your hard work, and Laura, we appreciate all your hard work in working with Phil to get this completed. Thank both of you very much on behalf of the city. Item 6.2, presentation of drainage improvement plan and prioritization of funding options for consideration. Bill?
So there's a number of things that I have in supporting material. And in case you didn't get to the, the last attachments and the last documents, included in that was the summary from the P&amp;Z's presentation to the city council a couple of years ago, along with the prioritization map. So I'm just putting that as background. And just to kind of remind everybody, in, in January of 2016, P&amp;Z provided that drainage prioritization concept, which is in one of the attachments. Subsequently, we hired KFW as a city engineer and then tasked them to complete a formal drainage study. So at the November meeting, which is really the last meeting we had since we didn't have a December meeting, KFW presented the final drainage plan to the city council. That plan did not include, you know, a, a implementation plan. It was, here's what your general requirements are. And so it's really up to the staff in consultation with the city engineer to come up with how are we going to implement this and what's the timing and how we approach this. So after the November meeting, we had several planning sessions with the KFW engineers. And we've created three general scenarios, which I'll talk about in a minute, for how we might approach that. Each, each, I call them options one, options two, and options three, include phase one, phase two, phase three. And what you really see is different projects are placed in different orders. So the first thing you have in your packet, which is on the screen now, is a summary of the projects as presented by KFW, which includes a prioritization list, a cost, and, and whether or not there's a third party that's potentially contributing to that. At the bottom of that, you see a potential cost somewhere around $10.5 million if you did the full cost of the project. I wanted to highlight that two of the projects, there is a cost to fully account for the drainage, and then there is a cost of a minimal accepted option associated with that. That's areas three and four, Turkey Creek or Elm Creek. You can see that Turkey Creek has a 5.4 million dollar cost to it if you did everything associated with that. And then if you just did low water crossings over the, the roads associated with that, I think there's three of them there, then it would be $510,000. And Elm Spring, which includes a stormwater sewer with a low water crossing, if you just did the low water crossing, it'd be 140,000. So you have that for background. So, next slide. We did some further analysis. It says if you take a look at the cost and then you count the properties that are directly impacted, and this is an approximate number, you know, you can see that just for points of observation, you know, the Area 1 wagon trail depression, there's eight directly impacted. And because of the mosquito problem and all that, there's certainly others that are affected besides that. But there's eight that are surrounding that area that are the most, you know, impacted associated with that. And, you know, do we know about that beforehand? That's a new category. We kind of added on there. Certainly, we knew about it, and it's been a problem for a long time. And just as a gauge, we kind of put dollars per property, back up please. We put a dollar figure per property associated with that, so you can kind of get a feel. It varies associated. And it also varies whether or not you go to the full-blown cost or you use abbreviated cost. Some of the areas deal with road access, so there's a column in there that if during a storm at the low water crossing, for example, the, the passage in the road is blocked, then you're certainly dealing with anybody that wants access to that, all businesses, commercial, et cetera, and residents that live out beyond that. So that's where that cost is there. Going to first option, and let me just explain the options first. Option one, two, and three all include three lower-cost projects, Area 1, 2, and 5. Because Area 1's 2 and 5 can be done independently, they're not necessarily the same people that are going to do 1, or will be the same people that accomplishes 2, and certainly not the ones going to accomplish 5. So all three of the options in Phase 1 include Areas 1, 2, and 5 because they're low cost and we can independently work through those. Option 1 attempts to in Phase 1, which I define Phase 1 as FY 2018. Option 1 proposes to deal with two low water crossings in effort to try to accomplish those two in this FY. And would begin planning for Phase 2 this year, and I'll talk more about that later, just so you can see. That's the big task. Option 2, if you'll just go to Option 2, and I'm going to come back to Option 1 in a minute. Option 2 basically does the three priority, three smaller items. But because of the P&amp;Z proposed drainage plan, prioritizing the municipal track as one, as the first priority, that would take care of the, basically the detention or retention area in the municipal track that would lead into Ripple Creek and would also deal with the Elm Spring bikeway low water crossing. Now, in this case, we included the only, only the $140,000 minimal option in the bikeway, which is a low water crossing, because that's the only thing that's feasible in this FY to get done. If you tried to tackle the entire project, there's no way that you wouldn't get anything more than, you, you probably wouldn't even get the planning part done in consultation with the engineers. Keep in mind, and I've talked to the, the engineer, you can ask him questions after I lay all this stuff out. If we do the low water crossing, that would be complimentary to a future project where you put the stormwater drainage in. So in theory, you could do the low water crossing. Three or four years later, you could do the stormwater crossing in that piece. So I, I think this is a lot more complicated and it's a lot more controversial, but since it was the first priority, I included that as Option 2. Option 3 basically says, okay, let's take all the low water crossings and let's just do all them at once, and we can probably save a little bit of money, as it turns out, it's not much, I'll talk about that in a minute, in, in your deployment fees as well as your bidding fees. And so that also expends most of your money associated with that. And then it leaves the two priority projects, Area 3 and 4, for future consideration in the next year. And then it leaves the municipal track in Phase 3, which is, again, different than the priorities associated with that. Now, having said that, anything that's in Phase 2 or 3, it is not really, I'm not asking for an approval for consideration tonight because really, alls I need to do is I need to get approval for Phase 1, which will then drive what I direct the city engineer, which will then drive the budget amendment that we're going to propose. Because while we have the $1.4 million in the capital improvement plan allocated for drainage, for this FY, we haven't authorized the expenditure of any of those. So we go back. Now, just for background information, I asked the city engineer in terms of timeline to get this thing done, because I've learned that you just don't say, okay, go do it, and it, you spend a month in planning, you go out for bid, and then it goes, it works. In this case, the engineering firm will do all the development of the proposals. He'll be coordinating with us. But they actually run the bid proposal, the selection process, and then oversee all that that goes on. But each one of these projects, which were recommended by the engineer based upon train analysis and the LIDAR that he has explained before and the information that we know before in site visits, all require an individual survey. And surveys to deploy will take about a month from the time that.
Later use that survey information to develop the detailed plans. So for low water crossing, each low water crossing subsequently will take about a month to develop. So if we want to go to two option, Option 1, where you go, let's bite off two low water crossings this year, bite off more next year. You're talking about a month to do the surveys, and then a month to do one low water crossing, another month to do the second one. So you've taken three months to, to get to that. Five crossings takes five months before you even get into the actual stakeholder bids. What they do is they develop the project to a 70% solution, and then there's stake owner coordination. Stake owners include adjacent property owners, the city obviously, utility lines, so CPS, which would have gas and water. If there's cell phone lines, require AT&amp;T, Time Warner, whoever may be on that. So you typically take about a month to get into that input process with the stakeholders. Another month and a half to finalize the plans and then bid the project. There's another month, month and a half to bid it and award the project, and then there's a deployment. And then, so you're talking about basically seven months of design before you actually get out there and go do that. So, this man.
Is that time period that you're talking about an estimate? For example, if we chose Option 1, Phase 1, is that what you're giving us a timeline?
Option 1 would be seven months. Option 3 would be 10 months. Option 2 could be done in seven months if you didn't have a lot of coordination with landowners, which I fear there's some landowner easement issues with Option 2. So that would be an added on, so seven would be the minimum plus any issues with landowners.
Let's, let's let Bill, let's let Bill finish, and I'm going to also recognize Mike and our engineer in case they have something that they want to supplement when you finish, Bill. And I'm going to ask that all, that you gentlemen come forward, just in case council members have questions.
So I'm going back to Option 1. I just kind of want to lay out again wagon trail depression and the Kenman Mae Way Farm. The engineer, myself, Curtis Brandon, as well as Ditten Properties of Bitter Blue, we've been on site and we have reconbed that. We've been in touch with those landowners, and there's actually some progress going. We're in touch with CPS. And we, we have a concept of how we want to do that. It's going to be surveyed, but we're moving on that, and we've done a lot of coordination. But, you know, we had the holidays, and we're getting back from that. The bent oak clearing is probably a test order, and having a clean crew go do that, it probably won't take a lot of time. But what this does is takes Chimney Rock and Fawn, which are pretty close proximity, and does those two. And Chimney Rock, I think, is the one that has, that the resident, there's residents that are cut off completely in highs, water events where even EMS and fire can't get to them. And that citizen we heard has showed up at this meeting several times and expressed that. We, the city staff validate that as, there's been several cases where, you know, it's been time, and this would be, it seemed to me to be a more urgent. These two would be a more urgent piece to that. In this option, which could be changed, this NIT takes the next five low water crossings and says, let's target those. Okay? That, go back. One more, please. Again, what I am going to propose later on, I'm just going to let you see it, I'm just going to tell you right now. I'm proposing, we, we authorize Option 1 for execution, Option 2 for, and Phase, Option 1 for execution, which would be Phase 1 for execution, and Phase 2 and 3 to a degree for planning. So that we start the planning now, and that we can then budget next year for that second phase. So that's, that's where I'm going to get to, because you're going to see that if you bite up too much, you're not going to get anything done this year at all, and we've just delayed it. An issue here is ultimately, and Chris Otto and I have talked about this several times. This project is 5 million and 2.1 million. That's the Turkey Creek area, which is really a lot greater than Turkey Creek, but it goes from Oakwell to Ultra Highway all the way through. And Elm Spring needs to be further refined with survey, and we need to come back to you before you are going to be able to make a decision. And I, before I can make a recommendation, it says, I think you should take, you know, the, the full price of that, that would be 7.5 million dollars versus an abbreviated option, which would be a lot less. Okay? So that survey, that stuff needs to go on. You know, what this does is give you time to do that without delaying that. And in this case, if you were going to do the full option, that could be a Phase 3, and that would require some sort of debt funding or other funding, which would be different. Okay, so Option 2, again, I already kind of talked about it. It focuses on the muni track and the detention pond and trying to prevent the water from going so fast into Ripple Creek, and would also just do the low water crossing on Elm Spring Bikeway. And then the only issue with that is, it takes care of that first priority, but we all know it's a fairly controversial priority, which could be derelict. It could be derailed, it may not be derailed, and if you approve it, we'll drive on. I can't predict that, but there are some complications in terms of private ownership rights and some other things that have to be addressed. But if, if that all went smooth with you, it has been $940,000, and you have about $400,000 left. And so that doesn't give you a lot of options for the remaining project without, without debt financing. I put that in there only in respect for the Drining and Funding and Zoning Commission's recommendation. That was number one part at the time for consideration. Option 3 really says, let's take care of all the low water crossings. We have the funding to do that. And then it says, okay, let's prioritize Area 2, and 3, and 4 as the Phase 2, because we know there's a real need for that. And we have some money left over, and that would give you time to choose, do you go full out or do you go minimal? And then the only thing that Option 3 wouldn't do is it doesn't really address the muni track, municipal track. So again, I say this 2 and 3, Phases 2 and 3, that's a concept now, after the, I, I fully expect what we come back and recommend in Phase 2 and 3 is going to modify based upon the engineering schedule. But, so to get to the bottom line, and Chris can back me up on this, all this, a lot of this, I prepared a consultation with him. We're going to recommend that you approve funding of Option 1 for implementation in this FY, so we get something done, which would be about $361,000. Then we've looked at the engineering costs that were provided in the survey by KFW. And so the engineering cost for survey and design of three low water crossings and windmill, bent oak, and cliffside are another 106,000. That's full engineering cost, as well as the Turkey Creek survey and detailed analysis, that would be 40,000. So your total amount for consideration is $507,000 for authorization this year. I apologize when you get that in your, your packet. Chris was. I apologize when you get that in your packet, Chris was on vacation, I think Lord somewhere with his family, so we've done a lot of this coordination last week. So two options if you choose option, two considerations are courses of action for you to consider if you agree with option one, which is, one, just fund the cost to implement at $361,000 this year, or two, fund the implementation cost plus the planning cost. And that would be a total of $507,000. Now, if you go to, if you go to, I think option three is the next viable one, if you went to option three, you could also approve the implementation of the full cost, which is $1.17 million, and the planning cost for those other two, that would probably take most of your $1.4 million. Chris can explain this more if you want, we would not accomplish most, we wouldn't accomplish anything this year because it's going to take so long to get the project details done, you bid it one time and if you're really, if you're going to be talking about, you're going to be doing this in FY 18, 19. So you'd only be funding the cost for engineering instead of here. So I hope I didn't confuse you. If you've got any questions-
Okay. Chris, Mike, if y'all would come, Chris, Mike, if y'all would come forward and if you've got something that you'd like to supplement before, I opened this up for a motion to begin discussion. Do y'all have anything that y'all would like to say? Chris?
The only thing I was going to add on option three is when Bill and I talked, we talked about bidding all for the water crossings as one bid, just for economy scale, which would put us into probably a December bidding, which is obviously next fiscal year. We could possibly do, you know, two or three of those to get a bid out before September. So we could get some bid out this year and then save the remainder for next year. There's different ways we could do it, if y'all really wanted to get a project under contract this year.
Okay. Mike, do you have anything you want to add before we?
Yeah. We took this on the public hearing and Bill presented this the same way as kind of last meeting.
God bless you.
And I wish y'all could have been present for the public hearing because our citizens are very vocal, they've heard this, they're going to do something about stormwater runoff, about flooding for 20 or 30 years and are tired of hearing it. I mean, we probably had an hour and a half long public hearing just on drainage, which for us is very, very long. So when we got our meeting in December, in January, pardon me, earlier this month, our recommendation was that we agree with Bill, we don't think we're going to tackle any projects that might have stormwater runoff from Military Highway because we really want the state to do all their engineering, all the work they can. We don't want to waste any money or do anything that may jeopardize the work they do. So we would put off anything to do of Military Highway until they finish some of their engineering. Second, although we didn't vote on it, we came to consensus that there's no reason to wait on these projects. We think that we owe the citizens some action as quickly as possible and we really felt we ought to go ahead with as many projects as our, that our fund balance will allow. But we think we ought to keep a reserve in there and make sure nothing weird comes up or draw out of the money, but we really want to get to work and show the citizens that we're really serious about building stormwater runoff and flood control in our city. So I think that's probably what we came up with.
Okay, Bill, do you have anything that you want to supplement after their comments?
No, he's correct. The way I presented initially, I did not have as detailed about the timeline associated with that. So they agreed you're going to go to option three, but it should be, in reality, apparent that option three wouldn't be done. Option one, there's a real possibility that we're going to have it awarded and substantially completed by September, but I'm talking to Chris, he's, you know, he, I'm going to tell you, he's like, well, don't promise that because you could hurt well being finished in October, November, but it's the, option one is the best way to get the ball rolling and get things going. And then if you fund the planning for phase two, then we're really working on all these at the same time and really tee up, what's it we need to do for FY 18? What are your possible funding sources for it? And then there could be some decisions made with, you know, more detailed engineering work.
Okay. Do I have a motion to open for discussion?
I'd like to make a motion and it's not what's recommended.
Okay.
I move the city council approves staff prioritize and determine the use of up to $1 million in the 2017, 2018 fiscal year from capital improvement drainage as recommended in three options presented by P&amp;Z staff and engineer for them to decide.
Okay, so you're looking for staff recommendation. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'm looking for them to move forward. It's not a recommendation, it's a directive.
Okay. Do I have a second on Michelle's motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, we're open for a discussion on Michelle's motion to take action and to implement projects. Michelle, do you want to begin the discussion?
I would like to say, it's not that I think you need to round, spend a million dollars, but I think just as Mike spoke, residents have been waiting for this for years and years and years and years. I've heard about it every year I've been on council. I want to give you all the leeway to go and do what you think is best in the fastest amount of time. I consider myself an expert at all in drainage, you guys have done all the research, so I trust you to go and get what needs to be done and prioritize accordingly.
Okay. Mike?
I think they've given us their recommendation and so I would make an amendment to move that we authorize the city manager to implement phase one of option one and submit an appropriate budget amendment to cover the expenditures. And if I get a second, I'll speak to it.
Okay, Mike is making a motion to substitute?
No.
I think that it's a motion to substitute. It's a complete replacement of the staff with a specific plan. So do I have a second on the motion to substitute?
I'll second that.
We have a motion to substitute, we're now in discussion on the motion to substitute.
Mr. Mayor.
Mike?
The reason that I make this motion is I'm a firm believer in crawl, walk, run. We're trying to do something that we haven't done and we've got to learn how to do it before we run and spend, what, three quarters of our reserves to do it. And the low water crossings that isolate our citizens need to be addressed immediately. Staff has already made that recommendation. I think that's a safety issue above all others and so I think this motion will also cover the, give the city manager the leeway to submit a budget amendment that includes the cost of planning for option two. That's what they say they want to do. I think going with their recommendation is a good idea, especially seeing as we can, we can deal with the public safety issues first.
Okay. Michelle?
I want more flexibility given to staff and engineers and planning and zoning to move forward. If there's something in phase two that for some reason pops up and is easier to handle and move forward on than something in phase one, I want them to be able to do it without having to come back and explain it and just take care of it. We've spent years going over this, we've been crawling for years, it's time to get up and walk.
Okay. Bob, I think you-
I just want to clarify, Mike, is that, are you talking about the 507ths of the planning and the cost? Is that the-
I would anticipate it, but this motion would give the city manager the ability to come back with a budget amendment that accomplishes what this, what is presented.
Okay, do we have any other discussion? Mike?
I kind of go along with the option one method of Mr. Simpson. There's going to be a learning curve here and I think that these people have given a lot of thought to this already and this does put the ball in action. I know I attended the P&amp;Z meeting earlier this month and there was a fair amount of discussion about possibly seeking funding to do the whole thing because interest rates are so low right now and they may not be there in a few years. I don't know if that's something we can talk about. That's a possibility and I think we should, we should get these things rolling. I think this is the best way to get something done in fact, excuse me, fast.
You could actually talk about that extensively if you want to because it includes funding options. I do have a question though, following on your question. Mike, what was y'all's recommendation for planning and zoning? Did y'all have a specific recommendation?
No, we really didn't. Our recommendation was to move forward with as many projects as we could as soon as possible. Again, we were looking at spending a million, we recommended spending a million dollars this year as soon as we could, just to get as many projects started that we could actually get started. Now, Bill's right, we need to present the timeline, we know how long it would take to get these items going and that probably would have swayed some of our discussion. If we would have approved too many or we would spend too much money and they couldn't start anything in this fiscal year, we probably wouldn't have liked that option. We would like to just get going as soon as possible.
Okay. Mary?
If I heard the discussion correctly, whether we budget a million dollars or we say go with phase one, option one, $361,000, there's a time component put into this that no one really has any control over. If you're going to do a low water crossing, it's going to be a month and there's going to be time involved. So to say, let's throw a million dollars and get as much done as you can get done and let's go, we already know that there is time pressure involved. I, like Alderman and Collier did in some of the planning and zoning hearings, and I think the main consensus that came out of it, and I think what everyone up here agrees on, is that residents deserve action on drainage and I think we're ready to do that, it's just a matter of how. I am inclined to agree with Alderman Simpson in terms of the conservative approach that's put out mainly because when we first started talking about this, the dollar figure that was proposed, I think was like three, $5 million and then it went up to seven. Now what we have here is $10 million. So if we start with one project that we know has a time period, that's a conservative approach, that takes action to move the ball forward on drainage, that we know has a base on a cost of $361,000, maybe once at the end of that, we can say, how well did that go and how can we move forward with greater experience with that under our belt and good planning? So I'm inclined to go with option one, phase one.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Michelle?
My option doesn't limit it. It doesn't say you can't just do phase one. It says if you get through phase one or you find other options you want to work on in phase two or phase three that work into the timeline and the budget, you can go ahead and do that. I just was giving staff more of the way to move forward on what they need to accomplish. But it doesn't matter as long as we move forward. Also, if we're bidding projects, we can be doing a number of these projects at the same time. So it's not like we're going to get one project and spend six months on it and just sit there and wait for that one project to be done. If we bid it to other vendors, we can be doing multiple projects, if I'm incorrect.
No, we can absolutely be designing multiple projects at the same time and once we get one in construction, we just keep designing the next one so we never stop.
And they're going to be done by third-party vendors. It's not like Public Works is going to be out there doing the projects.
Oh, no, yeah, we will absolutely be bidding these up to-
To experts. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Mike?
These estimates, are they conservative or are they realistic or are they padded or are there some hidden things that are not in these estimates? Because if we authorize, say, a million, which I'm not necessarily opposed to, but if these are, if we run into some snag or a big problem somewhere down the line on any one of these first groupings, you know, we might eat into that a lot more than just $361,000 because the figures have gone up substantially in the past years.
The estimates that we did on the year was slightly conservative. We did include contingencies in those numbers. The economy's booming right now, contractors are busy and construction costs are pulling up. That's my only concern is that the numbers we used, City of San Antonio unit prices, I believe they were 2015 numbers, were the latest that they had available, it's still the latest they have available, but I do know construction costs are currently rising.
Okay. So there is a proposal to go into the infrastructure nationwide. What type of implication would you estimate, would you speculate that that's going to have on construction costs of the type that we're looking at?
The way things are going right now, I'm not sure. Historically, construction costs went up, you know, 3% to 5% per year. I know in home construction, I just started building a house, construction costs went up like 10% in six months in early 2016. So roadway is not that volatile, but 5% per year is a realistic expectation.
Okay.
I would just say-
Mary, yeah?
All we have to do, any of us sitting here, is look back at the water tower expense and what was budgeted, what we ended up spending. I mean, if anybody thinks that these figures are going to hold true and correct, we're kidding ourselves. That's not to say that we don't move forward or we go for the lowest or throw out the highest, it's just, I believe that this option, it's the one that gets the ball rolling, that gets work under our belt, that gets things started. At the end of that phase one, we can look at it and say, here's how we did, here's how much we're over, and here's what we did in the meantime, planning for phase two.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion to substitute on the table from Mike Simpson to approve phase one, option one, with no additional monies allocated other than the $361,000. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion to substitute passes. We're now going to, now we're now in discussion on the motion to substitute as the primary motion. Do we have any discussion on the motion to substitute, which limits the amount that would be spent under the proposal to $361,000?
Mayor, just a point of clarification because the way you read that was not the way I understood it from Alderman Simpson.
And that's, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike.
361 and then have the option to-
Well, no, he's instructing you to come back, but you can, you always come back, I'm sorry.
Well, I come back and budget-
For additional money.
Which resolves all the planning for phase two and three.
That doesn't require direction from council, that's automatic.
Well, I need, I need the funds.
Didn't he draft something and hand it to you?
He just did. Option one and to submit an appropriate budget amendment to cover the expenditures. So now we're into that discussion. But the amount is limited to option one's expenditures and then he's going to make additional recommendations, which we will then vote on as a separate item, but he will not have, we will not have instructed him to move forward on that. Okay, so we're open for discussion, do we have any discussion? Mike?
Mr. Mayor, the intent of the motion is to get going on phase one of option one and have him come back and tell us what we need to spend on phase two next year as part of the budget, budgeting process. So it was by no means, there's nothing in the motion that limits the amount of money that's telling him to get these things going and come back and tell us what we need in the budget amendment.
Okay, which could either be, Mike, the way that your language is written, could either be submitted as a supplement for 2017, 18 budget year or to be a part of our budget package for 2018, 19. Is that correct?
Whatever he says he needs to get it done.
Okay. Perfect. Bob?
And I agree with that, the reason I said no on that vote is I don't want it to be limited to 361, I want to be able to have a planning and the funds used at that discretion. So I want to make that clear on the record, that's, I want to approve that with the option to spend the money for phase two.
Okay.
So you're making an amendment?
No, I think that that's just a clarification. Yeah, no, I'm reading what Mike has here and we're spending 361, that's what y'all are voting on tonight, and you're asking Bill to come back and instructing him to come back with recommendations for additional expenditures, either in this budget cycle or a future budget cycle. Okay? Any other discussion? Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6.3, Chris, thank you very much, Mike, thank you very much, we appreciate all the work from planning and zoning, you guys do an amazing job for our community and thank you for being the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Item 6.3, discussion action, Shadowwood Estates, Rock Wall on Northwest Military Highway. Bill, I'm going to recognize you and Clarissa if you want to make a presentation and then you can make any recommendations from that point.
Yeah, so I'll just start off by giving you some background.
Yeah, so, I'll just start off by giving you some background. At the November of 27, City Council meeting, the City Council directed City Managers to secure a legal opinion concerning the implication of repair and possible ownership of a wall. At the time, Attorney Dan Santy provided, and subsequent to that, Attorney Dan Santy, who couldn't be here today, ill overnight, has provided a written memo, which we've provided to council, which has provided that in detail. So, I've included a summary sentence in foreface, and then, and there was another update associated with it, I'll do that. So, if the city decides to participate in finding the wall, rebuilding project, question was asked as to whether or not the city will have some ownership interest in the wall, or underlying land, in our opinion, no. Ownership interested is required, and Clarissa can talk more about that. In fact, ownership interest, with any ownership interest, the city chooses to accept it, or also accept potential liabilities to maintain, to the maintenance of that ownership. The only other update I'd have is, I presented to you two estimates last time. One was for approximately a repair of 180 feet, which would be, was basically $60,000. A second contractor provided a cheaper estimate for 290 feet for $57,000. Subsequently, one of the property owners got a bid for 200 feet for $24,000. Okay? So, if you chose the 200 or the 300 feet, you would be talking, if you chose the 300 feet, and I haven't, I haven't dealt with that third contractor, you'd be looking at $36,000, and that's the only other update. At the last meeting, I didn't have solid, you know, agreement with all the landowners and their blue, but I do have that now, that they've all verbally committed to me that they would be a participant. So, with that, you have the attorney memo, which you all have in your package, you know, public that have, and I'll turn it over to Clarissa.
Mayor, council, just wanted to, thought it was important that we just take a few minutes in executive session to understand the new issues that Mr. Santy, my colleague, brought up in the memo. So, I think it's appropriate for us to just spend a few minutes, so that way you can make an educated decision about how to proceed, based on the liability and the issues that he brought up in his memo. So, will it take too long, but I think it would behoove the council to take just a few minutes.
Okay. Council's recommended that we go into executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn into, not to adjourn, but to.
Submove.
Yeah, Executive pursuant to 5, 51071, Texas Open Meetings Act, consultation with attorney to discuss 6.3, agenda item. We have a motion by Alderman Simpson, and a motion, second by Alderman Ross, to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Make one of them now.
It is now, it is now 7:43. Well, come and bring your, bring your, Curtis, Curtis, bring your iPhone, just put it right here, and we need to turn off the recorder. And then, we need to pause that.
We have been in executive session pursuant to, pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act 551.071, consultation with attorney to discuss Agenda Item 6.3. No actions were taken, no votes were taken, and we are now returning to our regular council meeting. Okay? I'm going to entertain a motion to begin discussion on Item 6.3.
Yes, Mike?
I would move that we find repairing the wall to have a public purpose, and that we authorize the city manager to expeditiously coordinate the repair of the fallen portions of the rock wall on Northwest Military, in cooperation with the property owners and Denton Bitter Blue. With Denton or the property owners to take the lead, and the city to contribute not more than $20,000 to be taken from fund balance, with the remainder of the cost being borne by the other party.
Okay. We have a motion to find a public purpose and to contribute no more than $20,000 toward the project, and I'll read the full thing again after we vote on. Thank you, Mike, for the motion. Do I have a second on the motion? Okay, Mike has made a motion, and Bob has seconded the motion. We are now open for discussion. Michelle?
First of all, I'd want to change that amendment to be a third of whatever the cost is, because if it's $24,300, I don't think the city should pay $20,000. So, I'd like to do that. Also, while we may decide there is a public purpose, I don't honestly believe there is one. Aesthetics is not something that the city needs to intervene on. I've called a number of residents up and down Northwest Military, and others, and what people don't understand is this property, it's private property, it's not city property. And what I've had is Chavno Creek residents and Bentley Manor residents saying to me, well, that's great, then our HOA shouldn't have to pay to put the wall up if the walls fall down wherever's our area, then why don't the city fix those? I don't have an answer for that. Also, there's 3,300 feet on Northwest Military, and that doesn't include Dezabala and Heatner, which could also fall down. And the final topic, subject is, people north on Northwest Military have a whole myriad of different fencing options facing Northwest Military. So, I've had people say to me, well, why don't you replace all of the wood and the whatever along Northwest Military up to 1604, because that would all look better? So.
Bill, has there been any type of inspection of the wall to determine if the problem that exists along Northwest Military also exists along Northwest Military and along the properties that's around Bentley Manor and Chavno Creek? Have y'all looked at those?
The, yes. The properties, well, first of all, there's a couple of questions you should ask, but Bentley Manor, Chavno Creek were built differently, with a foundation inspected to standard and so forth.
And I'm only asking that as it relates to this wall, to differentiate the two, because we're talking about this wall. I want to understand what the problem is on this wall, not do we need to fix other walls? I want to understand what happened here, because this wall is crumbling, and all the other walls in the city are fine, or they look fine.
They're new work.
Again, I've attempted to research that to the best that I can, and talked to Laddie and so forth, and I've kind of briefed on it before. This was the first wall section the city was done. Subsequent to that, they did a Heatner, and then they did the Dezabala. Our inspection shows that it's constructed differently and a lot more, I'm going to call it solid. I don't have a subject matter expert opinion on it's going to last X longer or is not. The section that goes along Northwest Military, in your summary, there is a number of, there's an assessment that was done, it's not scientific, but it says that you have the majority of that wall in good shape, you have some that's in fair, and some of these need to be repaired.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, I stepped in there ahead of you guys. Do y'all have any discussion? Mike?
I just wonder if a soil test in that specific area might be needed to see if the soil itself is too plastic to hold that wall, period. I don't know if that's part of it, also, if we buy into this, what is the guarantee of the contractors? Are they going to, if it falls, are they going to fix it? Is it going to be their responsibility? How are we going to get out of this? I think this is a dangerous slippery slope. I think it could lead to a lot of problems downstream, and I just don't think we should, I think we should stay out unless we're really sure about what we're getting into, and we don't know whether that soil can actually hold that wall.
Okay. I'm sorry, but we don't recognize people from the audience. That was why we encouraged people to talk at the very beginning. Mike?
First of all, a clarification, the motion said not more than $20,000, not $20,000, so, if it comes up to be $24,000, it wouldn't necessarily be $20,000 from our budget. Number two is, we had a discussion last time, and I think the, there was a consensus that there was a public purpose to the wall, and that being a presentation of Chavno Park and its standards to the folks coming into the city from the south. So, that's why I made the motion that we find a public purpose to this. It's been sitting around too long, it's time to get something done, and so, this is what we're doing, we're telling the city manager, get her done, and let's, let's work and make it, make it work well, and work with the property owners, who are our neighbors, and work with Denton Bitter Blue, and share the pain, and just treat each other like neighbors, and get her done.
Okay. So, Mike, I'm going to ask you, in light of what you just said, because I do certainly see that it says not more than $20,000, and I'm going to ask you if you would be interested in clarifying that, to say one-third, but not more than $20,000.
Well, I'm just leaving it up to the.
Up to the city manager.
City manager.
Okay.
You can get it with one-quarter or one-tenth, and that's fine.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Mary Ann?
I have a lot of questions, and some comments. First of all, I would see how we can say, this is a public concern, and then ask residents to pay for anything. We don't give them any control over what it's going to look like. We don't give them any control of how big it can be. So, I don't know how, on one hand, we can say, this is a public concern, and then, on the other hand, request that residents be on the hook for any of it. My questions come from the staff summary, where we have some documentation that shows that in the 80s, and, and, don't get me wrong, that's not to say that I'm looking at the city to fit this bill, okay? The questions that I have are, in the 80s, the developer intended to build a rock wall, and they built one. After several years of complaints by citizens, they rebuilt it. Who paid for it? Who paid for that wall the first time it was built?
So, you asked me a couple of questions. The first thing had to do with the property owners.
Well, no, I didn't ask you any questions, except for who paid for the wall when it was initially built.
My reply to your first comment was, the property owners, you said that they've been coming to me constantly associated with.
No, I'm just reading what was in the staff summary built.
To answer your specific question, Denton Communities, who developed the Chavno Estates there, as told to me by Laddie Denton, proposed a six-foot rock wall.
Who paid for it?
They did.
Okay.
They proposed a six-foot rock wall. The city at the time gave Denton guidance, I don't know that there's any action associated with this, that they were to build a two-foot wall, and then to have this four-foot section associated with it.
Got it.
After four years, the city came to them and says, the citizens are unhappy, we want a six-foot wall. Didn't pay for that to go up to the six-foot wall. The problem was that the foundation associated with that wall was not, there was no foundation built associated with that. It was a thin foundation, it was not meant to hold a six-foot wall.
So, this information comes from an agreement between the city that's documented and written down?
Nope.
It's just a handshake friendship? We've been.
I don't know.
Working together for so long, I mean, 37 years since 1980.
Which agreement?
That's what I'm asking you, is there any agreement between Denton and the city about that wall?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so, it was just a handshake?
Well, I would say that.
Is that a fair to say?
There is, there is, in the covenants, there is discussion of certain covenants, there's three separate covenants for these states.
And who drafted those covenants?
Denton Communities, and some of them addressed the wall, and some of them addressed the fence.
Right, they do. They're, they all addressed the fence, and that's, and the wall, and that's, the question is, Denton drafted those covenants, they run with the land, they impact the landowner, and they say, we're going to build this wall for you, but you're going to fix it from here on out, and you don't get a say in what it looks like, and you're going to put the city in a situation if it has to be rebuilt and fixed over and over and over again. I guess what I'm kind of getting at is, why does the city have to be on the hook for this at all? Why do residents have to be on the hook for this at all? Why can't we go to our good business partner and say, you're on the hook for this, you built it, it ain't working, it hasn't been working, it is an aesthetic issue, because it looks awful for months at a time? And it's sitting there, falling down. What does that say about our city? And who built it twice? Is anybody from Denton here to answer questions for us?
I have talked to them pretty extensively.
And they drafted the covenants, and they built the wall, and I don't know why we don't ask them to fix this.
Well, there are deed covenants, which allows each homeowner who is a part of the development project that was involved in that particular phase, for, in Basil's case, for his house, for Shawna, her house, and for anybody else, for their house, anybody who is one of their neighbors that had their houses constructed at the same time would have the ability to come in and to sue them over the deed covenants. The confusing thing about the deed covenants would be, at the moment that the deed covenants were prepared, the wall was two feet tall, and it had a, and it had.
Fence.
A fence above that, that was something like hog wire on Cedar Post. And so, as far as what the homeowners and what goes with the deed, I think that there's an excellent argument, that the only fence that anybody was ever obligated to maintain was that fence, because I very seriously doubt that there was any type of document that got executed by anybody, or that was requested by our city staff, or by our city council at the time that the wall was raised. And the wall was raised somewhere around 1990, 1992, somewhere in there?
It says 1980.
No, no, it wasn't 1980, because I lived here when the wall was taken up from two feet to six feet. So, I know that it was, the wall was not built in one stage. It was a two-foot wall, and then it took it, and then it went up from there, and that was done at the request of the city council as a concession for other items, that I'm sure that they negotiated with Denton Communities at the time, so the Denton Communities paid for 100% of that cost. So, we have a wall that was completed in two phases. We have homeowners that have deed covenants that go not to the city, but go to the surrounding neighbors to fix this. We have a developer who recognizes that whoever put this in, there would be a product liability for home construction items that would last for 10 years, which has now lapsed a decade or more ago, and so, they're no longer, nobody's, nobody is on the hook to pay for this, except we have a number of homeowners who live along Northwest Military, who look in their backyards, and they see distress, and their neighbors feel distress for them, and their neighbors realize that if you leave something like that for an extended period of time, it makes it look like Chavno Park is a trailer park, and that we're driving through a trailer park when you get there. And what I believe Bill is suggesting is that we have a cooperative process. We have a developer who has agreed to contribute money and has no legal obligation to do so. We have homeowners who have been injured, who may have some personal liability for this as it relates to the rock wall, and as it relates to their neighbors, and we have a city that our attorneys have told us that we may find a public purpose in this entire endeavor. And so, it is up to us to make a decision of, number one, is this a public purpose? Number two, do we want to participate in fixing a problem that nobody in this room caused? caused? But everybody on this side of the dais can help to accommodate and to have a solution that not only serves our neighbors who live along Northwest Military, but every one of our neighbors who drive along Northwest Military every day.
That's an argument that came up before a similar council in the past and didn't go anywhere. So, you know, the question that I have is, I personally think it is a public concern, and I think that it would be great if the city could fix it. My obligation, I think, as an elected official, is to say, who paid for that, who paid for it initially? Who built it? Who paid for it? It says in the documentation that Denton Communities has routinely built masonry walls where the wall encloses private property, but is highly visible from roadways because it obviously improves the community look. What do they do for those other situations? Are they on the hook for the maintenance and repair and fixing that? And if they are, why don't we ask them to do that here? So the residents don't have to pay for it, and the city doesn't have to pay for it.
I'm going to give you my best answer. Obviously, I've asked them, but up until this point where the city has agreed with the landowners, they have said no. And now that they have seen that, so to speak, that there's a state in there from the property owners of the city, they've agreed to this limited improvement.
And they've seen the documentation from the insurance company that shows that the person and the people and the folks that built it, because of the construction, the way it was built, that's what caused the issue?
They don't disagree with that. I have not showed them that personal, that insurance documentation, but as he said to Laddie, he said to me, I intended to build a six-foot wall. When you build a two-foot wall, and then at the request of the city, you put four feet on top of that...
At the request of the city? And where's that request? Where is it in writing? Who has it? Who can show me anything that says the city and the developer agreed to this?
The city, I'm not, I'm not the...
And I'm not attacking you, I'm just saying. Why don't we ask you those questions?
I'm just telling you, most of, a lot of what goes on between what we get Denton to do is done through collaboration.
A handshake, and they've been doing it for 30-plus years, and that's fine, that's great, but why don't we ask them to pay for this?
I have asked them, and I'm going to tell you, they're not going to agree to pay for the whole thing, and I think that this...
And why not? Could they come before us and give us an explanation as to why not?
And the reason why is because just the stretch of 33 feet along, 3,300 feet along Northwest Military would cost them over half a million dollars.
Is there a reason why we can't get them to come to this council and answer questions for us? I mean, not one person from Denton could even appear tonight, knowing it was an agenda item?
Okay, I'm going to defend them because Laddie called me and said, you need to be here. I stood up. All right? He's agreed to pay for one-third. I didn't anticipate if you wanted to, so you might apologize.
And it's not a, it's not a, I'm not attacking Denton either. I mean, obviously, they've been a great business partner for the city. They've also made a lot of money here doing what they do in the city, and will continue to do that until their development is done. I think it's reasonable, when we have an insurance document that says the construction materials and the construction was faulty, and that's the reason why the wall fell down, they have built it, we don't have any documentation to say what the arrangement between the city is, except for now, basically, a handshake, and we've been doing this so long together, let's work something out. I don't understand why, I mean, maybe if given the opportunity to come before council publicly to answer questions about it, maybe they would surprise us all and agree to pay for it.
Clarissa, I have a question for you. I know that you're a litigator. I don't know that you do any home construction work. I've worked with a number of construction attorneys at Langley-Bunack over the years, and I understand that home construction has a 10-year statute of limitations for defects in construction and materials. What is your understanding? Because frankly, if they use substandard materials and the insurance report says that it's substandard materials, it's like your house having the roof collapse, and it's after 10 years. Texas law says there's a 10-year limitation period for defects in workmanship and materials. Is that your understanding of what the law is?
I think so, but I would have to defer, you know, and look that up, because I don't practice in construction law, and I would hate to state something that I'm not 100% sure about.
Yeah. And so what you're asking, Mary Ann, is that, that, out of the goodness of their heart, because they contracted with somebody that obviously got it wrong, and we now have a period of 27, 25 to 27 years that have lapsed since the improvement was made to the wall, that we even, that that business is still in existence, and that Denton, that Denton basically ensured that all of those defects are fixed. Denton runs into defects in properties all the time, and after they turn the keys over to people, Denton Communities is, or the builders are the ones that are on the line for those. Not to, not to defend Denton Communities against our citizens, but, you know, you're asking somebody to basically make a gift of a rock wall to the city and to accept it...
Well, they've done it twice before. So I don't know why, look, we can, we can do whatever you guys want to do. I'm not asking any of y'all to answer questions on behalf of Denton. I'd love to ask Denton these questions. If Denton doesn't want to come, they've paid for the wall twice before, I don't know why they're not going to do it again. And, you know, we as a council collectively haven't asked them. I'd like the opportunity to do that because I want to get this fixed.
Okay.
Not just for the neighbors, but for our community, because it does look better when it's fixed.
The two times, I just want to clarify that, the initial construction, is that the first time? And the second time is when the hearsay, the lore of our community is that in the late 1980s, the early 1990s, the city council went to them...
You can explain it however you want.
No, I'm asking, I'm trying to clarify the two times, because I don't think, I'm asking you what your thoughts are, because you said twice...
I read it straight from the documents that provided to us.
You said twice, and the twice, the twice would have been the initial construction, the initial construction, and the improvement to six feet. I don't think that they have stepped forward to replace any walls or improve any walls on defects that have happened in the following 25 years. Mike, I'm sorry.
I'm reviewing what was, what was provided to us in the documentation. I've asked, and it was answered twice.
Okay.
To say it paid for twice. The other thing is, I'd like to know, they routinely build masonry walls where the wall encloses private property, and they do it all around here, all around here. You see it in construction everywhere.
Yeah.
And so they have those walls. I'd like to know what the arrangements they have with those others. And it's mainly just, you know, if, I agree also with Alderman Comer in that this is a slippery slope in terms of, if we agree to spend this money, and you have advised me on many an occasion about, let's not bind the hands of future councils.
And in this case, we wouldn't be binding the hands of future councils either.
Okay.
Mike?
I thought there was, excuse me, I was...
You, okay, if you would get to your point, please, so that we can, because you have said the same thing several times. I'd just like to, I'd like for us to move forward.
I would have liked for Denton to be here for us to ask questions.
Thank you. Mike?
Just a point of clarification on the engineer's report. I'll quote it. "It is our finding that the East property lying stone wall, what we're talking about, has not been damaged by the wind event of October 28, 2017, but resulted from quality of materials and workmanship and aging of the materials, normal environmental parent, sun and rain, close parent, and seasonal parent, wet and dry, close parent, cycles occurring over the years, and is not the result of any single weather event." That's the engineer's conclusion, is that, he didn't say that it was shoddily built. He just said that it was not as a result of a weather event. So that's, that's what the engineer has in front of us.
Does anybody else have any points to share with us? Bob?
So I am very against doing things on private property as a rule of thumb. I don't think that's our role as elected officials in a government, but I do think this is a public purpose that is very, very unusual. And my first, and I really appreciate the questions that were just asked by Alderman Heisel, because that would have been, my question is, why was this not paid for? Who did the work? And why is this not warranted? What does insurance have to say about this? Many of those have been answered, but we still have unanswered questions that I don't think, unless we drag this out for several more months, will be answered. And I do believe that it is a city nuisance. I have had feedback from residents. We've obviously heard it up here. We've gotten letters. And my assessment that I think it's, although I do think there are some longer-term issues with, and I don't think we're obligating any council particularly, but there's always the option that down the road, another part of this wall could go down. There was issues with warranty and the repair of the wall. There's other things that we, as a party too, could get involved in at later, later times. That concerns me, but I think overall, I think it's the right thing to do for our city and for the residents who are affected. I would support it.
Okay. Michelle?
And the only other comment I have is for the resident like Basil, who has, he's had that wall, because I live right across from him, repaired more than once. And so whoever's repairing it isn't, they're just patching it together because it keeps falling down. So it's not being done as a quality repair. I don't understand. And then I'm also...
Is it part of the section?
Well, no, it's part of the same section. Trust me, I've seen it over and over. And then they put the metal things up to try and hold it, and then it fell through that. My only other concern is whether or not when Northwest Military builds is, or does stuff, is that going to cause jackhammering and other stuff that's going to cause issues? I don't know. And so if there's going to be some sort of involvement, there needs to be some sort of warranty or some, and they're not going to warranty if Tech Stock comes in and does. So I'm just, you know, bringing those out.
Yeah. Bill?
The current proposals I had is to remove, you know, 300 feet, remove it, put a new foundation to standard, and build a wall not to repair it. I have specifically asked Tech Stock how they're going to widen that road and the implications associated with that. Now, no one can guarantee anything, but, you know, at the southern part of the city where you have the escarpment, so to speak, where you have a cut-in, their proposal is to, I mean, as it is now, to limit what they're going to, we haven't seen this 70% plan, but they're going to try to limit what goes into that and the heavy machinery moving into that. And then as you get up north, it becomes less of a problem associated with that. They didn't anticipate that there would be a problem. That's not to say that there's some areas that didn't do that. And just, we can continue this later on, or we can finish it tonight, but Denton has made it a point to, in their documents, as they build a subdivision, they build the wall section. In the case of Chavano Creek and Bentley Manor and Willowood, they deed it to the homeowners' association. The homeowners' association has ownership of the wall and then responsibility, they take out insurance, and typically, their insurance is paying for the wall. And so there's a difference in that. This is the property owner's responsibility, you know, closing it down.
Yeah, I think that what you just said is that instead of it being 12 people that pay for the wall, there are going to be 400 houses that pay for the wall, 400 homeowners. And so the, it's kind of like what we've been talking about on the public purpose, that we as a city are sharing that responsibility with all of our neighbors to get something that is a public, I saw it this time, I believe one of the, one of the council members referred to it as a nuisance, and it certainly has a nuisance aspect, but as a nuisance, I would hate for council to consider the step of seeking a nuisance action against the 12 homeowners because that's just not the way that communities treat each other. And so we're caught in a situation where we can negotiate to see if we can't get Denton Communities to bear more of a cost than us to bear no cost. But we also have the opportunity this evening for a manageable amount of money to come up with a solution that, I know it kicks it on down the road, the can on down the road, but it's, it's a problem that may not have come up, well, that won't come up more likely than not in our lifetimes for the 300 feet, and may not come up again for a council for 10 or 20 years. And in government, that's what you call a success, and that's what you call a solution, if you can get those 10 and 20-year solutions. So I'm hoping that council will find a way that we can find the public purpose, that we can move a $20,000 issue, a maximum issue, make, maximize, place a maximum cap on this issue of $20,000, and seek a solution, that's a final solution on this.
What is the response when Huntington, Willowood, Chavano Creek, Bentley Manor, somebody runs into their fence, which has happened, and their dues, homeowner dues pay for that? What is our response as a council going to be when they come and say, and now I'm also going to be paying for this other fence?
Well, if I could speak to that...
And really, I'm asking the rest of, you know, my voting colleagues.
Well, the way that, the way that Chavano Creek works is that the people that run into it, and they've had several...
Fair, really, I'm asking my voting colleagues.
Well, and I'm answering first because I have the right to speak just like everybody else, and I am a voting member on occasion. But in Chavano Creek, and I know this from personal experience, because my son dated one of the girls who ran into Chavano Creek's wall twice. And so, you know, it's like, okay, what happens? And I was curious, because I'm curious about lots of things. And her insurance paid for the replacement of the wall. And if it had been an uninsured motorist that had run into the wall, then Chavano Creek had insurance to pay for the balance of the repair on, as a part of their overall property damage issues. Now, I know that they're having to pay for insurance, and if we were to take responsibility for all walls in the city of Chavano Park, that they wouldn't have to pay for that insurance. But that insurance is a nominal cost because most times, automobile coverage is going to pay for the damage to the walls. But I have now spoken, and every other council member may now speak, as to what the status is on what happens legally when somebody runs into a wall.
No, really, my question was not that. It was, what are you going to do when your neighbors from the homeowners' associations come and ask? That's one question. The other question is, is there any desire on this council's part to even convene a special meeting and ask the Denton folks to come and answer those questions? If there's not, then let's go ahead and vote.
Are you making a motion for that?
Mike?
Input from my colleagues.
I guess my answer to the homeowners' associations that would come to me and ask me that question, no one has, is, you want to live in a gated community? You take the responsibility of the gated community. You have a homeowners' association, and that's the way you chose to live. We don't have one in the Estates. Getting Bitter Blue to talk to us, that's fine, but I don't think that, I would be more happy to ask him the questions, but I would not want to delay getting something going in order to do that, especially seeing as I'm going to be out of town for two weeks and wouldn't be able to participate during that time. That would be my answer.
Okay, anybody else? Mike?
I agree that I think the primary responsible party here is the developers, but it's been so long, I don't think we're going to see any freedom from that. I personally, before we moved into Chavano Park, we looked at a number of houses that had walls around them in the backyards. And the first question I asked was, who's responsible for that wall? And about half of them, you'd be surprised, said, the homeowners are responsible for maintaining and repairing those walls. And I said, no, thank you. Because you look around... Because you look around, and very few of these walls stay up. They start leaning. I just don't, you know, I mean, if you bought the house, you should have known what you were getting into, because it's in the deeds. They're responsible for it. It clearly states that. Is it a fair deal? No, it's not. It's a bad deal. But it's the risk that you take. And I know that Basil has repaired that same section of wall several times, because he's put in the last time, just about a year or so ago, the pipes on some of it. And it leads me to believe that he wasn't honoring his deed restriction and says you have to, you know, repair the foundation to support it. He should have done that at that time. I just think this is a dangerous thing for the city to get into. I think we're going to wind up with some down-the-road damage control, you know, maybe from one of the HOAs. They're going to say, you know, that they're sitting over there, half those people may never even come down Northwest Military a lot. We're sitting up here, all six of us, we live on this side, we live, most of us live within just hundreds of yards, in some cases, of that wall. We're used to it. I like to have it there, but I don't want to pay for it with tax dollars. I'm sorry, I just don't think that's a good one, that's my personal opinion, I just don't, I won't vote that way. But if we could get Bitter Blue to pay for more of it, help them go 50-50 with it or something like that, I mean, that's fine. Help negotiate it. Wave Mormons. Help them Howard McKinnon. But I just don't think there's going to be a lot of people in Bentley Manor, Willowood, Huntington, that are going to be real happy to have their tax dollars spent to repair a wall they don't have anything to do with.
Okay, Michelle?
It isn't just the HOE neighborhoods, and Chavano Creek isn't gated. It's north of Dezavala as well, because if you go straight up, there's a bunch of houses that have their backyards facing Northwest Military. And I called a number of people that live there, and they're like, "Well, good, then when my fence falls down, you should fix it. If I let it, you know, crumble, then you should fix it." And it's on their property. So it's not just gated neighborhoods. And so, I mean, I just have a concern about starting the ball. I would love to be able to say, "Okay, it's easy, it's," I think it's ugly. I look at it every single day, numerous times a day, coming in and out of my driveway, but I just don't think it's right.
How does it affect property values in the community?
I don't think it affects the overall property values, except for that particular property. As far as, you know, if I had to sell a house that had a wall like that, that wall would have to be fixed before someone would pay top dollar for that property. But if I am selling a house on Ben Oak, and they have to look at Basil's, they're not going to say, "Oh, I'm not going to buy here, because that wall's there."
So if you live right next to, so if you lived right next to Basil on Warbler, would that affect your property value? Would you think about buying the house next door to Basil's? Or would that be a selling point? Or would that be a negotiating point of, "Well, the value used to be X, and now it's Y"?
Well, the value of Basil's house would go down, not him and, you know, not kind of say him, but the house with the injured wall, that value property would go down. That doesn't mean the rest of the area would go down. You would assume then you would want to have them fix it, because you don't want to live next door to that. But that doesn't mean that the property that's being sold that has a good wall isn't going to sell for a good value. I mean, I just don't see that.
Does anybody else have any new points?
I just have a question.
Yes.
Maybe two. Personally, I look at this similarly to the Oakwell tin tree issue, okay? Trees are a huge component of this community. Something happens in this community, and Oakwell goes through, changes the way this community looks. And when we voted, these were some of the same arguments, you know, tax dollars and folks that have trees that were not impacted, well, could still be impacted. Second point is that fence is very, in a part of our community that is very visible, and it does impact the way we are viewed and the way it looks. So those are the two points that I want to make. I think that those are, those two issues are more alike than they're not. The only question that I have is, why would this council vote to spend tax dollars this time when it didn't previously?
Bill?
I can answer part of that, because I looked at the city back at council from, you see, there, late 2012, early 13, I think it was late 12. In that council package, the city manager wrote up a summary with no legal opinion, and he absolutely stated very strongly that it was prohibited by law to expend public funds on private property. The entire argument was made, now, there was an attorney here, and I don't know who that attorney was. I researched that with Charlie, and it was probably his predecessor associated with it, but I don't know. And there was no legal documentation, but the city manager's write-up, I can picture it now, because I just researched it in the last month, it left no option, if you were to believe that memo associated with that. So all's I have done is said, legally, you have to, you can determine if there's a public purpose, but if there's a public purpose, light drainage, which a lot of these drainage projects are going to be on private property, some won't be in a right-of-way, but most of them have a component of private property, which we will be extending, in some cases, hundreds of thousands of dollars for five or eight people. And so there's, you know, there is a correlation between Oakwell, which we went on six properties, we trenched, and we spent probably, what was it, $40,000 in total when we did that, on private property and public property, to prevent an outbreak of that Oakwell Center.
The last thing I want to say, if, I know Bob is happy about this, but I recognize the desire not to spend tax dollars. My, my desire would be that we take some extra time and we ask Denton communities to pay for it. If we can't get a consensus to do that, then the $20,000 that's on the table for this is about the amount of money that gets spent on parties that some people in the community aren't all that happy about. And so if we can vote for that, we should also be able to vote for this to be spent for this fence.
Michelle, oh, Mike?
I knew that was going to come up. The parties are on municipal property that is open to every citizen in this community to come, period. That wall is deeded to those people. Now, you can, you can say that we should do this for the good of the city. Okay, that's fine. I'm saying that we can do this, but downstream, there's going to be people who are going to say, "You did it for them, why aren't you doing it for me?" And I know we're trying to put into this some kind of contract that says, "This is a one-time deal, we're not going to do it anymore." But that's not going to hold up, because somebody's going to sue the city to try and get it down the road. It will happen, and y'all know this. It's going to happen. There will be payback on this. I hate to have to do this. Basil Cartridge is a personal friend of mine, and I know, you know, let him put whatever wall he wants there. Why does it have to be a rock wall? It was a two-foot wall for the, for the Caldwell fence before. I don't know the whole details of what it was years ago. The mayor said it was a two-foot wall originally, and there was a time that there was, you can see the coats and the wire in there, that's what it was, and that's what the deed restriction's called for, but the deed restriction's called for a six-foot wall.
No, the deed restrictions don't call for a two, six-foot wall.
It says right here.
I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't specify the nature of the six-foot wall.
No, it says it's six-foot.
Depending upon which property it is.
Yeah.
On this particular property, it says, "It shall be six-feet wall. It shall be a six-foot rock wall substantially identical in design and materials to the wall adjacent to Northwest Military Highway in Chavano Park Unit 15A. Concrete footings adequate to support the wall shall be part of the required construction."
But they're, Mike, they're different properties that have different limitations.
Okay, well, this is Basil's. If he didn't build it right when he rebuilt it, then it's his problem.
I would like to come up with a bit of the argument. I included all DCCRs from Chavano Creek to illustrate there's different requirements for each section. The section that is Basil's requires a fence to be built substantially the same as the fence, which is the two, which would have been the two, it doesn't say what the composition was. So in that one, it says fence. In the second one, it says fence. In the third one, which was done later, as the developer went and said wall, it was very specific to a wall. It doesn't probably make a big difference in your point, I'm not trying to say that does, but-
Well, I've talked to Basil a number of times over this, over the years, and he would, he'd like to have a wall, and if he has to pay for the whole thing, he'd just just send it go ahead and put a board fence on his section. And I don't see why we should stop it. And I keep coming up to, to the city with this, it makes it look like we want, the city wants this rock wall there. And if that's what we're going to do, then we should own the rock wall.
Why don't we let them decide what they want? Why don't we let them take it down if they want? Or we let them put up a fence?
He's only pushing, he had a deed restriction, then he wouldn't do that.
There are these covenants, and Denton wrote them, can't we amend the covenants? Can't we-
The covenants, the covenants own all the rights and the, and the deed restrictions, not Denton communities. He has no relationship with those covenants going forward, because he doesn't own any of the properties. He can't see. Denton Development-
No, I recognize that. I'm saying, why don't we let these homeowners be zoned the same way that the rest of the community is, and let them decide what kind of fence they want to put up?
And, and they have a contract between themselves, among themselves? We have, we can't-
They have a contract between who?
The deed covenants are a contract-
Each other, the neighbors.
Between each other. The neighbors have a contract, and depending on when their properties were platted, if the homeowners who were platted at the same time as Basil's house was platted, all have the right to bring an action against Basil for that rock wall, if they want to. And frankly, the idea of neighbors suing neighbors to get a rock wall fixed when we can avoid that type of acrimony in our community for $20,000 seems, why would we want to encourage somebody to sue his neighbor?
I don't know, another previous council voted no.
But, but Bill explained why the previous council did, or I think Bill tried to explain that, he told that the previous city council member, Bill, correct me if I'm, if I heard you wrong-
Can I answer that? Because I was the only one on council at the time, and the only one here at the time. And I voted no, because I was told by our attorney at the time, it was an aesthetic issue, and there was no public purpose, and therefore we should not put money out. That's why we voted no, period.
And you had an opinion from an attorney that said that that is the nature of the law?
Yes.
Okay. Clarissa, has the law evolved any in, over this period of time?
It has, I don't know if it's evolved. I know that the memo that they put together, and that I agree with that, sure, the settings can be considered a public purpose. Depends on, you know, the circumstances around, so that's my-
So that has changed since we voted.
Okay, thank you. I don't disagree that council was told that they shouldn't do that, and council did exactly the right thing by following the recommendation of their attorneys.
I'm just answering Mary Ann's question.
And the question that you have tonight is, we've been told that it could be a public purpose, if we have a finding of a public purpose. If we have a finding of a public purpose, we can work to develop a solution for our citizens, and Bill has been working very diligently to bring Denton to the, Denton communities to the table to participate in a settlement, and, to participate in a solution, not a settlement, but in a solution for this. The first time I talked to Bill about this matter, the answer was, "We're not going to pay for a penny of it." And I told him, "I don't think that we can get city council to participate at a high enough level that the homeowners would want to build their wall." And Bill was persistent and, and talked to Denton communities on many occasions, and eventually got to, "Hey, we'll pay up to a third."
Should we call the question?
I think that I've had somebody call the question. The question has been called. There being no further discussion. All in favor of finding the repairing the wall to have a public purpose and to authorize the city manager to expeditiously coordinate repair of the fallen portions of the wall on Northwest Military in cooperation with the property owners and Denton slash Bitter Blue, with Denton on the property or the, with Denton or the property owners to take the lead, and the city contribute not more than $20,000 to be taken from fund balance with the remaining of, with the remainder of the cost being borne by the other parties. It is a motion by Mike Simpson and seconded by Bob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. I, I know that everybody has, I want to thank council for the extended debate on the item. There was a lot of passion that went into the extended debate on the item. I hope that we have reached a solution for the near term, if not the long term. I want to thank Bill for getting us to the point that we could reach this answer. And, you know, we will all go forward, and we can differ on many issues, and we will differ on many issues over the coming year, but this is a new year, and we will work together for the following months. Okay, item 6.4, crime report. Chief Lacy, come and tell us the good news, and hopefully not any bad news that you want to, that we have to be sharing. I'm, I'm going to, it's almost nine o'clock. I'd like for council members to have a chance to take a short recess, five minutes, if we could do that. Do I have a-
I'm fine if we just keep going, and those who have to have a break should take it.
Well-
Is that you?
Y'all don't want to stand up and stretch your legs for a minute?
Let's get it done.
Okay, very good. Chief, come on down.
Just a quick. Thank you very much.
We'll see you next year.
Members of the council, police and I bring you the 2017 crime report. It's the second crime report I've brought to you all, but it's the first one with me reading your police unit the entire year. We overall handle 2.8% more calls. We handle 2,797 calls from here. Our burglaries of homes, we had four, 50% reduction from the year before. Business or building burglaries were an 82% reduction, we had three. The biggest one that I really liked was our burglary of vehicle. We brought it down to 13 for the year, 74% reduction. We did have 22 thefts, which opened 17 the year before, so that's a 29% increase. And we had one robbery in the city. It was a business robbery. And because of that, and because we had zero before, it's a 100% increase, but we had one robbery. But overall, the biggest part I think is important is through the different efforts we've done, we've brought our crime numbers down 48% during the 2017 calendar year. Again, the largest increase of anything we had was the thefts, 22. Of that 22, 11 of those were lawn equipment and tailgates that were stolen. We had seven lawn equipment thefts and four tailgates, so 11 of those. And we've actually made several arrests off of the lawn equipment. We didn't catch anybody with the tailgates. We, we now, in fact, just this week, my detective is filing a third case on the same young man who comes out here and steals a lawn. We arrest him, we put him in jail, he gets out of jail, he, he has some chemical issues.
Does he get them from open garages, or does he get them from commercial?
This has all been the folks that come to move your yards, and they, they leave it on their truck while they're in their backyard, or they leave it in the yard, and they come back and it's gone. And honestly, the biggest problem we have on trying to really clear those kinds of calls is the same problem that we all have, including myself. And that is, we own equipment, but we don't own the serial number. We didn't keep up with it. And without the serial number, I can't say that that echo blower is your echo blower. It could be anyone's echo blower, unless you have some markings on it that you can identify. But we, we've tried really hard to do that, and dug up some pickings, so that's why we were filing this time, a couple of times. Anyway, officers make 2,630 citizen contacts from here. That's where they're driving around, and they see you, and they pull up and talk to you. 480 homes were checked. That's 480 separate homes, not how many times. So it doesn't matter if we checked your home for one day, or we checked it because you were gone for three months, it only counts one time. were gone for three months, it only counts one time. So that's 480 separate times that we had a home to check. So the number obviously would go way up if we looked at how many people were removed. We did file 60 cases with the district attorney. That means they were not the level of traffic ticket. DWI thefts, like the Chuck Manso's, I don't know what those were for. The officers, even while doing all of this, I would like to point out down there that we completed during this last calendar year, 3,135 hours of training, both internal training and training at like the academy or other locations. Let's advance training, that happens anyone through the academy. We, we have 100% of the police department now trained in de-escalation and crisis awareness, and they're all now certified as mental health officers with either the certification or the training, and they're waiting on their extra year, because you have to have so many years of police officer first. But 100% of my full-time staff now are trained, which is a phenomenal feat that I don't think you'll find working any days in this state as a, but it was a goal that I had, and Mr. Hill backed me up on that, and we've sent our officers to do that. And consequently, this year in the legislature, what have they demanded that we teach? De-escalation training under the Sandoval Act. So we, I knew that was gonna come, it was ahead of the game, and we've actually jumped ahead for that. The addition of the two extra positions that y'all allowed me to put on board, I think helped with these numbers and helped with our visibility, obviously. We are looking at, my staff and I, we're constantly looking at, and I'm working on some things now, on some other methods that we might continue to improve our services to the city with our staff. The examination and the advanced equipment that y'all allowed us to get this past calendar year, fiscal year in October, we're utilizing, it's helping for the officers being able to see things out there and to do their work. We're continuing to explore other ways to collect evidence, to assist in prosecutions, and to control any of the crime. So as your police chief, I'm very committed to providing that exceptional level of service that we've been doing. I'm very committed to the continued officer and citizen contact and team efforts that we have in solving our crimes. The staff of the police department, I feel, has done an exceptional job in doing what they're here to do. I'm very proud of being a member of that team at their police department, and I'm also very proud to be your police chief. And if you have any questions over any of the information that you have, yes?
Well, first of all, I think you guys have done a great job, and Chief, I think personally you've, you've implemented some things that have made a big difference in our city. You kind of stole my thunder, because I was gonna ask you, if you had to choose one thing, well, maybe I didn't, if you had to choose one reason why you think crime has decreased, or you guys have made an impact, what would that be? It sounds like the two officers made a difference. The community contact, would you say that would be the other?
I think that the interaction with the community, both talking with the community and being seen in the neighborhoods, when I implemented all of our excess time to be in the neighborhoods more, is a big effect. One of the problems in, in determining crime prevention is you can't really put a method to something that didn't occur. So we just have to work with what has been known over all the years to work. The more bodies you have roaming around in white and white cars, to, to some level, is going to make a difference. Having the citizens being involved as they are, when they do see something, they pick up that phone, they dial 911, and we're there with a dismemberment group, I think that makes a big effect. So I, I think they all cohesively work together to make this be a lower crime. I also think that during the, the time from October of 2016, when I came on board to present, we speak with all of the criminals that we catch, the car wrecker especially, and we, we have a real little huddle about, what are you doing here, and why you don't want to ever come back here? And I think that affects what they're doing too, because when the bad guys know that we know who they are, and that we're gonna find them, and that every time they come back, if, if you do five burglaries, we're gonna file five burglaries on you. We're not gonna be like Santa Tern together to file one. We pointed that out last year when we, we called the three folks that did the five burglaries over off the Happy Trail, and I'll probably do a clip size. That's 15 cases we had to put together, five per person. But we filed all three people, five cases, and when they walked into court in those cases you're stacked on, it, it has a profound effect. Plus, the district attorney gets a lot of leverage, and, and we stringently ask the district attorney to use that leverage to our best advantage.
So that very last slide was maybe one of the comment that I just noticed. It seems like habitation, particular habitation has decreased, which is fantastic, but a very last slide that you threw up there showed the vacation home checks, which I, my question for you is, is it's gone, if you look at 13 all the way to today, it's gone down significantly from that year to this year, and certainly in all years, 17 was the least. Is that, is that a reason because we've had so many new communities and new homes built? People don't know about that service, we're not promoting it? Or are we just not getting, I'm just asking that question as to why? How, how can we make a difference there?
I, I think that, I mean, we promote it on our webpage, we talk to folks about it. It's not something that we stretch out, it, it's a reactionary thing.
Right, right.
So if 490 people had asked, then we would have had the extra 10. We certainly can push that information out more, and as we do more of these, I make a lot of the HOA meetings, and I'll, I'll even be here for Bentley Management Thursday. I, I tend to bring that up as one of the things that we do often. It, it isn't uncommon in the smaller cities that's still there. What is uncommon is the, the level and quality of, of customer catered service that we as a law enforcement agency can give a city that, that even some of the small cities don't, or can't, they, they either don't have the budget, or they don't have the personnel. So I, I think we're doing good even with that.
Oh, no, I agree. I don't think that's a bad, I'm just, I'm just wondering why the number's going down, and I just think it's something, I know I've used that service with, since 17 years ago, which I think it's very good.
We're, we're working very hard. In fact, I've worked with Curtis very, very closely. I'm trying to automate that a little more, in that you will fill out the form online. We have it that way now. You can fill out the form online, unlike the old one where you printed it out and just hand it in. It's a, a file with a PDF. We're, we're moving towards the final stage of that, where you will actually pull it up, hit the send button, and it'll just print out here. And it won't matter where you're at, you, you may forget to tell us, and when you land in Paris, France, you jump on your computer, and you hit send it, and we'll get it. And you'll be able to save it, so that the next time you go, you just change your dates, and we'll have it on the place. I, I want to bring that into that level that I've seen with some other agencies, and we're, we're working more closely. And I couldn't do that without Curtis' expertise in the IT area. Curtis is, and that's even for us, it's a team effort. It's not just the police doing things, it's, it's the things that Curtis and his IT department has done, it's the support I've had from Mr. Hill, it's the support that Chief Knott gives me on some of the areas. So it's truly a, a big family that keeps the crime in. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation, and we look forward. Chief, we have really enjoyed having you here. We enjoy the professionalism of all your officers. I think you've made some really great hires, including the person standing at the back of the room. You're to be commended on the professionalism of your staff. Thank you on behalf of all the council members. Item 6.5, discussion and action transfer portion of fund balance to capital replacement improvement fund. Bill?
The bottom line of this is according to our fund balance policy, we should not maintain an unassigned fund balance, 50% of our current budget. There's $271,000 rounded up, that currently exist unassigned to the fund balance that council can consider that amount, or a different amount, more or less, associated with the transfer of fund balance. So what our policy says, I didn't read it all, but it's in your packet, then we will consider that, consider transferring it to the capital improvement fund. And so, in today's action, council should decide that they want to assign the $271,000 to cap, if they want to consider assigning it. And if you do, under which category you want to do that? Drainage, relocation of water lines as an example, other like fire, place of public works. The other option is you can leave it as is, and it can be considered in the budget process. Particularly, we have in the past few years considered it during this time period. Last year, we did not transfer anything, because we were at 49.8%, to some of that nature. Here before, Laura already mentioned, we transferred a significant amount of over a million dollars to various different fund areas.
Okay. Bill, before I recognize council members for a motion, I just wanted clarification on the amount that was projected as we're going through the budget process. I think we anticipated a fund balance at the end of the year. Is this close, or is this way over? It looks like it's about 80, it feels about $80,000 heavier than what we had talked about. I thought we were talking about $137,000, and this is 271.
It's, it's actually, it's over, significantly over.
Do we have a reason why that happened? Because, you know, we, we, you know, fund balance is nice, is it because we didn't spend money? Is it because we had unexpected revenues?
She already covered it.
Okay.
Yeah, so even though we amended the budget, we received slightly more in, after the last amendment, sales tax, as well as-
Permit fees.
Permit fees, and even added lawn taxes.
Even EMS.
EMS. So then, then there was a reduction across the, across the board, but also, as Laura mentioned, for the-
Sowries.
The sowries, so she made that right.
Well, I saw, yeah, I was listening.
Illegal was 35, from reading off her notes, 35,000 lost than we had pledged.
Well, good. Can we do that again?
Well, we reduced it this year as well.
Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we amend the budget to transfer excess fund balance of 251,000, and I'll explain that if I get a second, to the fire department capital replacement fund line of a ladder truck. Here's, here's the motion.
A motion to transfer the excess fund balance of 251,000 dollars to the fire department capital replacement fund as a line item for a ladder truck. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we, we're now open for discussion. Mike?
First, to explain the amount, we just voted to spend $20,000 from the budget excess, or excess fund balance, so that I brought it down to 251. And we're gonna need a new truck, and we need to put the money away for it, and this is a good place to put it, I believe.
Okay. Now, you specified a ladder truck, and of course, we recognize that in any budget, that all unrestricted funds, other than bond funds and, and funds of that type, that once we put them into a category, it's still fungible from council to council, and so that while we may designate this as a ladder truck, it could actually wind up being just any truck, or it could just be anything in the fire department, or it could actually ultimately be moved from the fire department to roads or to some other purpose, but that you're asking that we call it, for now, a ladder truck?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? Michelle?
Council hasn't approved a ladder truck, so I don't agree with that, and I also would like to amend it to just have staff recommend where it should go in capital replacement improvement fund, and we don't need to dictate where.
Okay, now, that, that sounded like a motion to substitute. Are you making a motion to substitute?
Yes.
Okay. Your motion to substitute would be to amend the budget to transfer excess funds of the amount specified to capital improvements and replacements as specified by the city manager. Is that correct?
In the amount of 251,000, because I agree with that.
Okay, so we're gonna leave the additional 20 in the-
Budget for the wall repair.
Okay. Do I have a second on the motion to substitute?
Second.
We have a second on the motion to substitute, which would put this into capital replacement to be designated by the city manager. We're open for discussion on the motion to substitute.
I just wanted to say that there are a number of things that the money could go for, and I think that staff should be the one to recommend where it would be best served.
Okay, do we, Bob?
I would agree with that assessment, although I would say that, and I'm not in agreement with, with a fire truck at this point until it's agreed upon by city council, but I think we've just agreed that we're gonna spend a minimum of 361,000 on drainage, plus a, a additional fees for the planning of the next phase. So I would like to either propose this option, or even amend it, amend it to have this money go into drainage specifically.
Well, and, and based on the motion with the second, the motion to substitute, the city manager can make that recommendation.
Right.
And I don't know if you spoke to that purpose, but that would be one of the options that would be available. Do we have any further discussion on the motion to substitute?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mike?
I have spoken to staff, and that was the genesis of my motion, so we can keep it down the line if you want to, but I think the original motion should stand, so I would speak against the motion to substitute.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion to substitute to amend the budget to transfer excess fund balance of 251,000 dollars to the capital replacement improvement fund, to be allocated according to the recommendation of the city manager. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
The motion carries. The motion to substitute is now the primary motion. Do we have any discussion on the primary motion? Okay, there being no discussion on the primary motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Item 6.6, discussion action purchase additional water rights in lieu of renewal of existing Edwards Aquifer water leases. Bill?
Should be pretty easy. This one should be fairly easy. Council, I'm gonna get to it. Okay, so again, we considered this last year, and worked through the water advisory committee, and we basically came up with a proposal to, over the next 10 years, buy 138 acre feet, which, in our assessment, instead of leasing several hundred-
Just, just a second, before we go on, it's a budget amendment where there's gonna be an ordinance, Bill is gonna bring us back the specific recommendations, and that will be at the next city council member. I, I didn't want y'all to think, for the public, if they're watching the video, to think that, oh, we just told Bill to go and do whatever, he's going to bring this back as a budget amendment. And I wanted to clarify that for the people watching, because the people in the room know that, but just, sorry, Bill, I apologize. I should have thought about-
The last agenda item.
The last agenda item, yes.
Yes. Again, previously, through the WAC, the council approved 13 acre feet. That was part of a plan over 10 years to purchase 130 total acre feet. As of three or four years ago, we were leasing 500, 600 acre feet to provide that cushion associated with, well, what acre feet rights, what water rights we own in Edwards Aquifer, what might be required of us in a stage three, stage four situation, where you have to own up to 40% more than your rights, or you have to have some ownership or lease agreement of up to 40% which you currently own, or what you're currently using in a drought period. Okay, so previously, what we had done was, we leased a bunch of water rights, we have been letting those leases expire, with the idea that we've really had a 38, 35, 40% decline in the demand of usage of water, that's not scientific, that's a swag, and that we've brought the Trinity online, and if we were to purchase 130 acre feet, we would have about 1,000, 1,200 acre feet under the current number of users we have, it would be an adequate cushion for what we would anticipate, not only now, but in the future, in case, for example, the Trinity well was not producing very much. I provide a lot of background information in your packet, I'm not gonna discuss it in great detail unless you want me to. We did, again, purchase 13 acre feet last year. We closed on that effective 1st January. Wardog, which is the regional water advisory committee that we deal with, that we contracted with, we're a membership of, they actually purchased it and do all the arrangements with us. They asked for a data call for all cities. They ask for a data call for all cities. If you want to purchase new or lease new water rights, you get that request into them early. So this is before the budget cycle. What I'm looking for is an approval from council to proceed with the purchase of thirteen acre feet. It would, in accordance with the tenure plan. This would be budgeted in the FY eighteen, nineteen, eighteen, nineteen budget cycle, but I need to take the action now. So what I'm asking for is the consent approval here now, from actually actual approval from the city council. I will be bringing it back with the anticipated purchase price budgeted in the budget for next year, because it won't be effective until, again, one January nineteen, but you gotta get ahead of that. We did budget last year fifty-five hundred dollars an acre foot. We actually only paid five thousand dollars per acre foot, and we were able to get actually the cheapest amount per acre feet of those that were in our region associated with that. And that was perhaps luck, but probably because it was a thirteen acre foot, not a thousand, not a hundred, or not a fifty seven, not a larger number of acre feet. So again, we brought it before the Water Advisory Committee on January eighth. They approved a recommendation, city council, for the purchase of an additional thirteen acre feet. There is an impact between five and six thousand dollars per acre feet, which is sixty-five to seventy-eight thousand dollars. We're asking a motion to approve the purchase of additional thirteen acre feet for Edwards Aquifer for two thousand and nineteen, and that request will be requested again and budgeted in the budget process.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I do.
Bob?
Motion to authorize city manager and staff to purchase additional water rights in lieu of renewal of existing Edwards Aquifer water leases year two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Approved the purchase of additional thirteen acre feet of Edwards Aquifer rights for two thousand and nineteen will be requested and later budgeted.
Okay. We have a motion, and we have second from Michelle. Do we have any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item six point seven, discussion action appointment of council-appointed positions, bank services, city medical director, IT services. Bill?
So again, we started this as a request to council a couple of years ago. Take a look at the services that you get contracted, make sure you're putting eyes on it every few years, maybe, you know, depending on what the cycle is, and so that you're not, you're not just assuming that we have a service and it, it is what it is. So we have, based upon that, gone out for a question proposal, a question qualifications, and in other times, we have said, we've looked at that, and we're happy with a certain element, and we're requesting, and we don't go through that. This year, we really had three services that we wanted to review and then, and get guys from council on as the medical director, who really works as, as under, our EMS works under his license. Oftentimes, as I understand it on EMS calls, they're actually the director. This guy provides very reasonable cost, fees. Fox Bank is, is the next one in IT services. I'll just kind of say that in summary, the fire chief and I, mostly the fire chief, very satisfied with, with our medical director, and he's provided great service to us at one of the lowest prices that is around. Our IT services, we actually renegotiated the contract last year, and we actually have a reduction in costs associated with that, but it's auto-renewed every year. And so Curtis and I talked about, we actually really seriously considered going out again, but the team that they've got knows us, they've been, they're so reactive. We've come with the lowest IT services cost that's out there. We're very happy, we want to, we want to, we intend to auto-renew it again unless I'm told otherwise. The bank services with Fox Bank, we're very satisfied with that. Actually, Laura and I have had a conversation in the investment committee about that today, but by law, we're required to be five years to go out for a question proposal. That contract we currently have expires in December of two thousand and eighteen. So again, we're eleven months out, but since this is the time we do the annual review, we know that by law, we have to do the, the, we are proposing that we only issue a request for proposal for banking services, and that that's what all we do. We've done the review the other two, and we didn't see that as required.
Well, I think council is actually reviewing these, so I think the council should actually make a motion to continue the services of Dr. Richard and Turpili.
Turpili.
Turpili. And to continue the services of HRT Services, and then also to make a request for proposal for banking services. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Mike Simpson to continue our current physician, in his position as our medical director, to continue HRT Services, both at the recommendation of council, and to go out for a request for proposal. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
HTS.
HTS, yes, I'm sorry, I said that, I wrote it down right, but I said it wrongly. Okay, and a second from Mike Colmere. Do we have any discussion on this? There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item six point eight, discussion action authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract to hire an interim financial director. Bill, do you want to give us an overview on this and tell us what your recommendation is?
I think it would be brief. Laura, I think our financial director has indicated that she is going to depart from the park sometime probably in February. We're working through that, that timeline. She's been fantastic and committed to a professional transition associated with that. In the meantime, we are going to need to get a interim financial director into the city. And/or if there's applications that are received or qualified and we deemed that we approved that, we would, we, I would come back to the city council and say, I don't need an interim, but we've got a qualified person we're gonna select. Right now, we haven't, we've received at least one application, but the period just began last week, rather, the notification just began last week. I believe I need to come to city council, because we would probably contract with Texas first, and that would be an obligation of funds, which is not, which is not salary, which is not pledged yet. The typical cost is, as I understand it, the cost of the salary plus ten percent, and that would go along, there might also be costs associated with a per diem if the person came out of town, and or travel costs, you know, over here, it might have to be negotiated twice a month, travel from wherever they work, et cetera, as I understand it. And I've talked to Zina, Zina's not here, she's done this a number of times, and it is mission dependent on, you know, the cost dependent upon getting someone's qualified to be the interim as a premierization with government accounting, in code, et cetera, and being able to manage those finances between the time.
Okay, Bill, unfortunately, we haven't posted this to give you authorization to hire a, a financial manager.
Right. I just now asked for approval of the
Okay, because you talked about that, and I just wanted to clarify that that's not one of our options.
We've always wanted to hire someone, thanks for clar, I would bring that back as a separate term.
You said that.
Yeah. Okay, do we have a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract to hire an interim financial director?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Michelle. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mike Simpson. Do we have any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item seven, all matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Coincident with each listed item, discussion will generally occur. Does anybody want to pull any of the items seven point one through seven point six? Okay, there being no indication, we will now go to item eight. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do we have a motion to approve or accept items eight point one through eight point seven?
So moved.
Yes, Mike?
I'd like to remove eight point six, please.
Okay, we've had a request to remove eight point six by Mike Simpson. Do I have a motion to approve items eight, approve or accept items eight point one through eight point five and eight point seven?
So moved.
Michelle has made a motion on items eight point one through eight point five and item eight point seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mike Simpson has seconded the motion. There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Brings us back to item eight point six. It's a resolution R twenty eighteen zero zero one ordering the May fifth, twenty eighteen general special election of three aldermen and a special election authorizing the street maintenance sales tax at a rate of one quarter of one percent to provide revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets. I'm glad that you pulled this, because Bill needs to tell us what's happening in Bear County about this as well. So Bill, why don't you tell us about the resolution that you're, the resolution that's before us?
The election officer's taxes.
Yeah, so as we normally have every May, we have an election for either three aldermen or two aldermen and a mayor, and that is included in this resolution. In addition, because we have a street sales tax, and that is required to be for the voters for validation, if you want to continue that thirty-four years, then this is the year that we're required to do that. Next year will be the crime patrol prevention district funding associated with that. The city can allocate up to two cents of its sales tax to different entities and, or to different funds. Currently, we have one percent allocated towards the general fund, point five percent, one percent to via, point two-five to street tax, and point two-five to the crime patrol prevention district question. So this proposal would continue to have that authorization of sales tax at the rate of one-fourth of a percent for revenue to be used for the maintenance and repair of municipal streets. So this resolution orders the general and the special election.
Okay. Bill, Tommy Cobert had talked about coordinating all the elections in Bear County and Chavano Park at the same time. Did we get any further clarification on that, or what did the Bear County Election Commission tell us?
Unfortunately, no. And so there was at a Bear County suburban, coalition of suburban cities, a discussion of that. It was unclear as to exactly which dates that we were talking about. Bear County runs a number of elections that are separate from the traditional Texas municipal elections, which is in this case, May fifth. They do, they do primaries, they do runoffs, they do the general election, then they have runoffs, and there's a, there's a runoff on, on, in, in May as well. So there's, there was all that, there was confusion, and when asked, we didn't really understand which elections he was talking about, because the elections commissioner was actually in training, was not there. It was, it was, there is a general proposal or an idea that we should consolidate elections from Bear County and all municipalities so that there, there's one effort, but there really wasn't a lot of detailed discussion, no follow-ups occurred.
Okay. I was curious, because, you know, it costs us money to maintain, to run our city elections, and if we could run them in tandem with the county on the other elections that are up in the same cycle, it would be a cost-sharing opportunity which could potentially save our city some amount of money.
It's just a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah, saves us a little bit. It also, it also removes the inconvenience of this being an early voting location for all of those other elections, because we would just be running our own early voting, and they would have the other people that would be here at the same time, which is confusing, because people come here thinking that they can vote for everything early. Okay, so do, do we have a motion? Yeah.
He pulled over something.
Yeah, the reason that I asked to talk about it is because attached to the resolution is an order for the election, and that order is for two thousand and fourteen, and we need to make sure that as we approve the resolution, that we don't approve that order.
That's true.
Zina said she was gonna bring us an order later, but as the packet is built, it looks like we're approving both, and we don't approve, re-approve two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah, so Mike, you sent a note on that. Zina came in this afternoon, and she noticed that in the Word of Document that she attached, when she did say the PDF, it was an old file, she removed that, and I don't know if you've got it on disk, or I've got it online where it's removed now, and then she reposted the packet even online through the website that it should be cleared out.
Okay.
So, but that was a, a good catch, and she did not intend for that document to be included in the act.
Okay. So assuming that it has been corrected, or, or subject to correction, do we have a, a motion to approve resolution R twenty eighteen zero zero one ordering the May fifth, twenty eighteen special, general, general special election to elect three aldermen and a special election authorizing the street maintenance sales tax at the rate of one-fourth of one percent to provide revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets, subject, of course, to correction.
So moved.
Now, Mike has made a motion, Mike Simpson has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Michelle has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Brings us to item number nine, motion to adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Michelle has made a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mike Colmere has seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries.